Oh, good evening, everybody. Our closed session ran a little late. I appreciate your patience out here waiting for us. I would like to go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask everyone to please join me in the Fledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and again, welcome to the February 12th meeting of the Placerville City Council. Could the clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Acuna.
Here.
Councilmember Borelli.
Here.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Regina. Moving on to item 3.1. This is an opportunity for the council to address the public. Are there any council member comments this evening? I will start on my line. Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Um, no, I do not have any.
Thank you. Councilmember Thomas?
I do have a few notes. I was not, I was absent last meeting, so I had a little catch-up to do tonight. I did meet with Chief Ortega and took a tour of the police station and discovered what, how little space they really have to work in and how efficient they are with that space. You definitely do a good job of utilizing every inch of it. I attended, I know you guys talked about it a little bit, but I attended the three-day workshop for new council members put on by the League of California Cities. And it was, it was three days of an intensive experience of everything to do with cities. It was a wealth of information, talking about the challenges and recognizing a lot of the challenges that we face in the city, dealing with financing, with revenue, projecting out the revenue and what it's going to look like. The legislative, we talked a lot about the legislative process and what's going to be happening or what proposes, what the governor's proposing to do with the housing element and the things he's tying that to. And it's, it's going to be interesting, this new environment in the state as they move forward. Let's see, what else did we talk about? Having an efficient meeting with the, with the city manager and how to not take up too much of his time was a big, was a big topic. I think that one was put on by a city manager, actually. And I wanted to point out a couple of people during the storm we had, the big storm, there was two guys that really stepped up downtown. One was Todd Pickett, and he was out there and almost up to his knees in water clearing the drains because it was literally inches away from going into several businesses. And if he hadn't have done that, they would have flooded. And there's another gentleman up here, just up the street, just a little bit, what was his name? Michael Mitchell. And he has that blue house next to the Independent. And he, he was doing the same thing. He must have cleared out about six or seven drains to keep the, the businesses from flooding up there. So, real kudos to those guys that step up in a tough situation there. Another thing we did, Cleve and myself, Kevin Brown and Mickey Kaiser, we met, it was two members from the Peak, we met with the gentleman from the fiber broadband group, and we discussed moving forward with what it looks like running fiber through the city and to every house. And that's, it's a long-range project, but we're, we push that back to, back to Peak, and hopefully they'll be coming to the council with some recommendations on how to move that forward. Sorry for the length of this, I was gone for a whole month. I did meet with El Dorado, El Dorado County Transportation Commission, Woodrow Deloria, and he kind of got me up to speed on everything, transportation in the county. Met with several people, and he was one of them. It's, it was very interesting understanding how the, the city and the county interact when it comes down to all the millions of dollars that goes through this county for, for funding. Met with Terry Lamontcheck, also from El Dorado Arts Council. Is it El Dorado Arts Council? Art Council. And she, it was, that was an eye-opener, understanding how, how important it is, it wasn't an eye-opener, but I recognize how important it is for the arts and what they do for our community in terms of bringing art to it. And it's something that's, that I think is understated in, in the value that they bring to our community. Then I met with Rebecca, and, and we went over everything to do with how the EDCTC interacts with the city. And that was important because I, as a representative of the city on the EDCTC, I want to make sure and one representance and not step on a lot of toes because we want to get as much of those dollars coming into our city as possible. So, that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. And we're glad to have you back.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Borelli.
I don't have any reports.
All right, well, thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
I've got a couple of comments. I, as a new council member, I've been trying to become oriented with the city departments, and I just want to thank Mr. Rivas, Mr. Warren, Mr. Ortega, and Ms. Neves for their time bringing me up to speed on all the different departments. I still need to reach out to Public Works and Park and Rec, but that will be coming soon to meet with you and learn more about those departments as well. I attended the fire safety workshop here and just really appreciate all the local organizations that came out and participated in public outreach. And last week, I attended the Sacramento Valley Regional Climate Symposium, which was put on by the Capital Region Climate Readiness Collaborative, which is a handful. And that really stressed the need to, for cities and counties to plan and adapt for the changing climate and kind of provided a lot of resources for updated climate models. So, that was interesting, a little discouraging, but definitely, definitely worth attending. So, that's all my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Appreciate you attending that. It's an important future topic that is going to be more and more on our radar. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes, sir.
I don't know if this would be the right time or maybe later, but one thing I was thinking about is I know we have some vacancies on boards and commissions. I was wondering if we couldn't do another quick announcement on that, just to get it out to the public once more about some of those that are out there.
Actually, we were going to do it a little later in the meeting. I don't know if Regina, that, are you prepared to do it now? Because we have a big audience now. Later on, you never know, the ratings drop.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, due to the lack of applications that we have received for the two commissions, the Planning Commission and the Parks and Recreation Commission, we would like to extend the application period by two more weeks to allow for more, to allow for more community members to submit their applications. We should have enough to go forward with interviews for the committees, however. And the current members, the current commissioners that are sitting in those expired, expiring terms will be seated until their, until those applicants are chosen for those seats.
And Regina, the, the original closing date was this Thursday for the filing?
It was tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow by 5:00 PM, so we'll, we'll extend it by.
So, two more weeks from tomorrow.
Two more, two more Wednesdays.
All right. And that is for the Planning Commission vacancies and the Park and Recreation Commission?
That is correct.
And the other ones will go forward? The other?
Yes, we'll move forward with the committees. Yes, H and L, Sales Tax Committee, and Placerville Economic Advisory Committee.
And that is a interview process that's going to be taking place next week?
That will take place next week. I haven't yet reached out to the candidates because we haven't closed the application period yet, but that will take place at City Hall. It will not be open to the public, it's just taken care of by the interview subcommittee.
Well, thank you very much for being prepared for that, Regina.
You're welcome.
Thank you for asking that, appreciate it, Michael. It's important, especially the two big committees, two commissions. Moving on, I will go ahead and make a couple of brief comments. The, I would like to, again, thank our Public Works crews and probably our police department staff that was working the night of the various storms that seemed to be. All of a sudden, we have winter in February now. And quite a bit of, quite a change and some, some very big challenges. So, I would just like to thank our interim Director of Public Works, Mr. Nick Stone, for your fine job and the direction of your troops and getting the roads cleared and keeping the trees out of the way and so on and so forth. So, thank you. Your, your efforts are greatly appreciated by all of the citizens. Well, if no other comments, I will move on to item 3.2, which is a Caltrans update, which I did reach out to the Director of the El Dorado County Transportation Commission, Woodrow. And he did provide me some information, which I, of course, promptly left on my printer this afternoon. But I do have a little bit of it in mind, a bit of an alarm. Caltrans is now finally putting a project team together. I would have hoped that, given the impact that this, and this is the mosquito, the Highway 50 mosquito bridge, overcrossing bridge on Main Line Highway 50. What we do know now is that they are proposing a 12-day reduction to one lane in each direction. They have some dates in April, and they have a date in May. And unfortunately, I don't have that with me, but they are, they are beginning to hone it in. Cleve, do you?
I have those dates.
Do you have it with you?
Do you want the dates?
Sure, that would be helpful.
They're proposing either April 1st through April 12th or April 22nd through May 3rd.
And of course, it's weather-preventing because they have to reduce Highway 50 to one lane in each direction and do their concrete work. I, hopefully, we'll hear more tomorrow, and we'll find out what their plans are for community outreach. If it was my project, I've already, I would have already had one or two meetings, given the impact that this is. This is going to affect a liver and a loaf of bread in this county. Little, never mind ambulances and school buses and everything else. So, I will be honest, I am disappointed that, that some things have already not taken place as far as community communication on this. Any, any comments from council on, on that particular item?
Didn't they say that they were, they were going to provide more signage?
I'm not, you know, at this point, I'm going to say, I don't know. We need to push you to find out.
I thought that I got that out of the conversations.
We'll definitely need, need our Woodrow Deloria to help us over Transportation Commission to make sure that we get the appropriate communication and involvement from our community. Yes, sir?
At the last transportation meeting, they did, a representative from Caltrans did come by and talk about doing an outreach as well as improving, and they understood the, the, the lack of signage on the last one, and so they have taken that seriously going forward. And they also talked about doing a community outreach, but they didn't give the dates of that. So, they are, it is top of mind for them, and they will be working on that.
Well, thank you for that. All right. Moving on to item 3.3, acknowledge and file a worker's compensation trending, trending report. Mr. Warren, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we have Dory Zumwalt, Account Executive from York Risk Services, to present the report. That'll hand it over to Dory.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi again. So, we're going to go over just the trends over the last five years for the city of their workers' compensation claims. So, the first slide is all the different claims that have come in year over year. So, we'd like to see more blues and greens and less of the reds. However, as you can see on this, this year for 1718, we have more indemnity claims, which are claims where it's not just medical treatment, it's compensation for their inability to work. So, that number has gone higher. However, the paid is significantly lower than it's been in previous years. So, even with the increase in claims, the dollar amount still went down, which is fantastic. So, that chart below goes over the, how much was paid and how much is reserved for the claim to pay out the claim. Any questions on those? So, the next slide is how much we have paid on the city's claims regardless of the date of injury. So, the other charts went through how much we paid for the claims that came in during each fiscal year. This includes all the claims even back to the 1980s. And again, our, our cost was a little bit lower than it, than it's been for the past three years. The next chart is the recoveries that have been received, and I'd just like to throw that in just to show that sometimes we get some money back as well. Generally, this is through the excess insurance. So, the city's claims are self-insured through the pool, Northern California City Self-Insurance Fund. And any claims over a specific dollar amount, you receive reimbursement from the excess carrier. And also, if there's any motor vehicle accidents or damage caused by a third party, we can also collect recovery as well. And the next chart is fantastic. So, this shows the lost days with, during each fiscal year for the claims that came in. So, we'd like to see the lost days lower, obviously, because that reduces your costs. So, for this last year, there was very low amount of lost days. And so, the way we can do that is by offering modified duty and working with the physicians in the area to release injured workers back to modified duty. Sometimes, there's nothing that can be done. If the doctor takes them off work, if they have a highly physical job, they're unable to do that, then obviously, they're going to have some lost days. The chart below is the closing ratio. So, I like to see it as 100%. So, however many close, or claims come in, we'd like to be able to close that many. So, it's, it's a little skewed when you see that middle year, how high that middle year is. That was clearly an above-average year, yay. But then this last fiscal year, we continued at 100%, which is where we want to, we'd like to see it. So, now I'm going to go into some more of the injury trends. So, these next charts talk about the different injuries that have come in over the past five years. And so, I like to look at this for risk management purposes to see if there's, if there's a pattern or if there's anything that we can do to put some risk management efforts, some risk control efforts to reduce our, our costs. So, in looking at this, the biggest cause of injury is a strain or cumulative trauma. Cumulative trauma claims are across, across the state for public entities, the most expensive claims there are. I like to think of it in terms of like going to a dentist. If you go to the dentist right when your tooth starts hurting, generally, they can take care of it right away versus if you wait, you know, a few months, whatever's going on with your tooth, it's a lot worse, it costs a lot more. Same thing with accumulative trauma. So, if you can, if you, if you notice that you're in pain and if you can get to the doctor right away, it's usually cheaper versus accumulative trauma where it's a long time. Generally, the cumulative trauma that we see are for backs and for knees. The next chart is the, the body parts that's injured. Now, the city of Placerville is unique in that one of your top injuries is for your fingers. That's rare. It's usually low back, knees, and multiple body parts. But back is there, and knee is there. The next chart is, goes over the, the nature of the injury. And although a contusion, if you can see that red line spikes up really high, so you would think a contusion claim would be, you know, pretty inexpensive, but there was one claim where the injured worker fell, and it originally looked like a contusion, and it turned into a lot, a lot worse, which is why that, that amount is higher. And then also, again, the cumulative trauma type claims have a lot more cost, a lot more severity involved. The top occupation, police always wins. I don't think I've ever, yo! I don't think I've ever seen police not win the, this race. And that's just the nature of the, that's just the nature of the job, right? You never know what you're going to come against, and you have a lot more hazards in your occupation than, than I do. And this chart makes me so happy. I put together the top 10 claims that the city's had over the past five years. And if you can look at the paid for the 10th highest claim, it's only $875. That is fantastic. That is great. The most expensive claim has settled, it's, it's resolved now, so we'll see that, we won't see an increase in, in that severity because that claim's done. But I look at this to see if there's any lessons learned, and most of those injuries are the cumulative trauma, either to, you know, the knee, wrist, low back, and then also hearing. So, there's, there's not a whole lot, sorry, Dave, there's just not a whole lot that we can do. If I saw a whole bunch of trip and falls or, or lifting injuries, then we can usually do more, but with those cumulative traumas, they're a little harder. Any questions on that awesome slide? Okay, so now I just have the, the injuries by department. And the reason why I put it in here is because I showed you how police won the, the race. They had the most claims. But I also wanted to show you that proportionally, it's not as expensive, which is, which is great news for the police department. So, the average indemnity workers' comp claim is over 30,000, I'm sorry, $30,000. So, the average claim for the police department is only 12,000. So, again, for the state of California, it's about 30,000. For the, for the city, it's only 12 for the police department. And then the next slides I have is, is, like I said before, the city belongs to a pool. And so, I included the other members, there's 22 members, and I included the other members just as a benchmark to see, to see how Placerville is doing. And your average claim is $7,800. Again, the state average is, is over 30, so fantastic job there.
And one quick comment on that. When you look at these agencies, they vary in size, but Auburn, Oroville, and Red Bluff have similar-sized payrolls as Placerville, and we're well below at 78, $7,812 as compared to those three other cities of similar size. So, good news.
Any other questions?
Any questions from the council for Dory on the presentation? Well...
No, I'd just like to say I always enjoy hearing from her. She is so, she really makes this interesting.
Thank you.
And you do it with such a nice smile on your face. And that makes it even better.
Thank you. I actually love workers' compensation, so it's, it's a good thing, and it, you know, is hopefully helping our employees to help, help them through this scary time when they do have an injury. And it's always great to report good news, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and seeing us again this year, and congratulations to all the members of the, all the city employees, because they all work many long hours and many dangerous situations and challenging weather conditions, et cetera, et cetera. And it's, it's just, it's, it's a testament that they're staying focused on what they're doing and working safe, working probably as a team, making sure that they don't get each other in a situation where they're going to reflect, and no one wants to be hurt. And so, congratulations to the whole city, to our staff for maintaining the, I think we're number four on your, on the, in the list as far as expenses go, and so...
Right. And as Dave mentioned, that size of city makes a difference, too. So, you guys are doing fantastic.
Well, thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you again next year with the same smile.
Same good.
The same positive friends.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening. Thanks for coming up and visiting us again. All right. If you could put us back in the limelight, please. Madam Clerk, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much. We wanted to just amend the agenda, when we get to adopting the agenda, do you want me to consider those changes, moving those things?
I would say, why don't you just handle 15.1 now?
Okay, sure.
You can do that, and then it's just an informational item, and then you can modify the agenda under.
For the 12s, for the numerous, numbers of 12s. We have a record-setting agenda this evening. All right, it's been, it's been requested that we move an item up this evening. So, the next item that the council is going to consider is item 15.1. I believe Mr. Lishman has a staff report on this, and what this is, is a verbal report regarding the El Dorado Community Foundation grant for the Monument Garden. And the Monument Garden is located at the corner of Main and Bedford Street. Good evening, Mr. Lishman.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Acuna, members of the council. I'm happy to announce that Community Pride was just notified, they'll be receiving a $5,000 grant from the El Dorado Community Foundation. The grant will cover the irrigation and drip system, trees, plants, flowers, and it will be very beneficial in helping complete the final phase of the Monument Garden project. I'd like to acknowledge Steve Yule and Kathy Lishman for submitting the grant application, and Carrie Fryer for designing the landscape plan. We are planning to begin the landscaping in the spring while continuing to raise funds for pavers, boulders, and other costs related to the final phase. So, with that, Community Pride is very grateful to the El Dorado Community Foundation for the grant, and we are very excited to get started on the landscaping.
Well, thank you, madam. Is there anyone here this evening that, from this project, that would like to address the council on this, this wonderful $5,000 reward, move this project forward? Seeing nobody approaching the council, so thank you for that. We'll go ahead now and close session report. Good evening, Mr. Driscoll.
Good evening, Mayor Acuna. Tonight, the council did not take reportable action in closed session on the items with the exception of the litigation, City of Placerville versus Wawaat, where the council did not take action other than to reaffirm the prosecution of that case and the appointment of Mr. Samuel Emerson as attorney for the city in that case.
Thank you very much, sir. Now, we move on to item 5, adoption of the agenda. At the request of the city manager...
There may be an interested party on that case here, I'm not sure, so maybe the...
Okay.
Mayor, you may want to ask if there's any comment on that.
Thank you, Mr. Driscoll.
On the closed-session items.
Is there any member of the public here this evening that wishes to address the council on the closed-session matter that the city attorney just reported out on? Good evening. If you could please state your name for the record?
Yeah, good evening. My name is Singh.
And if I would ask you to limit your comments to three minutes, please.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
I'm here for City of Placerville versus Wawaat. In that case, there are so many things happen, which is really undermining the public trust. For example, without any participation of the public, it was called as public nuisance, means that the city officials can put a finger on any house, can say that this is a public nuisance without any facts from the public. So, I will send some of the emails regarding this. And during the litigation, there are so many things happened. For example, the defendant does not live in Davis, but in the quote, the Mr. Samuel Emerson said he, she lives in the Davis. He put some notices, which is required by the law, put in the newspaper, which is circulating in Davis. So, in other words, in short, that city can put finger on any house, can say public nuisance, can take away that house, so this is kind of, that really deteriorates the public trust. There are so many legal things have been happening. Now, I say one thing, that let's assume that this receiver is legally appointed, legally right. He was appointed in August. He did not do even a damn thing until now. So, even if the appointment of receiver, the whole case is about appointment of receiver, he should finish the job as soon as possible, within reasonable time. During the litigation, the court, as well as the city decided, three weeks' time is a reasonable time. The same city says that the receiver is not doing anything for many months, it's okay. In other words, now, receiver lives in Southern California. He lives in Southern California. The house's conditions are deteriorate much worse than, than he was being appointed. He doesn't pay any insurance, he doesn't pay any mortgage, he's not doing any duty of receivership. So, but he's billing for $6,000. So, what I'm saying that, the city is finding a, a, a means that put the finger on any house, declare public nuisance, and get the money, and get the whole house from that person. That's not what the public wants, and that's how public trust is being deteriorated. So, anyway, I will send the emails to all of you people, and you decide that how bad it is, you know, it's just like this, taking somebody's house without any justifications. And in during the, the city officials, Mr. Pira is one of them, submitted declarations that this problem is there, this problem is there, this problem is there. Those problems were already approved by the city. So, city is reversing its approval, saying that, oh, wow, we did not approve that. In other words, you get the permit, and you fix those problems, and they are being settled, then they are not being raised by the city anymore.
Mr. Singh, could you conclude your comments, please?
I will send the emails, all the details.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Driscoll, just for the record, could you please note the address of the property in question?
Certainly. Thirty ninety-five Cedar Ravine.
Thirty ninety-five Cedar Ravine. Because this is pending litigation, the council will not be making any comments on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Driscoll. All right. Now, we'll move on to adoption of the agenda. And I've been requested by the city manager to consider moving item twelve point, twelve point eight before the other twelve, before item twelve point one. With that thought, is there a motion for approval?
Move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The agenda is adopted. Ceremonial matters, we have none this evening. Moving on to item seven, which is public comment. Is there any written communication this evening, Mr. Morris?
No.
Thank you, Chair. Moving on to oral comments, this is the time in the meeting where the public is invited to speak to the city council on any item that is not on this evening's agenda. We do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, and that your subject matter is relative to the work that is performed here at city council meetings. Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak to the council on a non-agendized item? If you could please come forward and state your name for the record, we would appreciate it.
Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville. And I commented once before that we had three ballards at the corner of Main and Sacramento Street, and the middle one was always getting destroyed. And I noticed that it's now been replaced by a planter, which looks good and is less likely to be taken out. So, good job.
Thanks for the follow-up on that, Sue. I understand that there's a permanent concrete patch underneath that planter, so it can slide around to its hurt content. Is there any other member of the public wishing to address council on a non-agendized item? Seeing no one approaching the podium, I'll go ahead and close public comment for this evening, and move the council on to item eight, the consent calendar. Is there any member of the council that wishes to pull or ask a question on any of the items on this evening's consent calendar?
I'd like to pull item eight point four.
For further discussion?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Any other items that the council member wishes to remove for further or comment? All right. Before we move forward, I'll ask if there's any member of the public that wishes to address the council on any of the consent calendar items before us this evening.
Sue Rodman again, on item eight point six, the purchase of a two thousand nineteen Ford F-150 for thirty thousand dollars, three hundred and fifty-seven, using California Department of General Services procurement to get a better price. And I noticed that in the staff report, it said that they were originally approved to get two pickup trucks for the community services department, and they deferred that second truck due to its engine being replaced recently. So, purchase of just one truck for thirty thousand dollars saves thirty-two thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars and three cents, which I think is very good management of our financial resources, so I think the community service departments gets a gold star.
All right. Thank you, Sue. Appreciate you recognizing the efforts of our various departments, trying to stretch our dollars, making sure that we're buying the right things from the right dealers, et cetera. All right. I will, if there any other member of the public wishing to comment on consent calendar items, I will ask for a motion for the approval of the balance of the consent calendar.
Move the item.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. The second was from Vice Mayor Saragosa. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Thank you. The balance of the consent calendar is approved, so now we will hear item eight point four, which was, oh, yet semi-controversial issues regarding the Federal Communications Commission. I believe Mr. Revoz would have the staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Staff is asking the council to do two things. The first would be to adopt a resolution of intent, to initiate amendments to the city's municipal code, and create a section that would regulate the installation of small cell wireless facilities that are necessary to be consistent with the Federal Communications Commission final rule that was recently adopted for wireless infrastructure deployment, which is in anticipation of 5G technology. And then, number two, that the council would consider authorizing the mayor to sign a letter in support of House of Representatives Bill 530, and that's called the Accelerating Wireless Broadband Development by Empowering Local Communities Act of 2019. That was brought to our attention by the League of California Cities. Essentially, what this ruling is doing, and addresses a number of different things, and I have, if you look at your staff report, I have some bulleted, more specific items that the FCC ruling was addressing. One would have been rule violations. So, in other words, does a local agency have regulations that sort of be a preemption of allowing for the installation of these small cell devices? Two, fees and charges. So, the Federal Communications Commission had a list of maximum fees that the city could potentially charge for applicants that come in and want to locate small cell infrastructure within the city. And I just want to note, too, that it basically would require that the city would entertain and allow for the installation of these small facilities within city right-of-way. So, we're talking about light poles, utility poles, and the like, where these items could be located. And so, a major concern, at least of the City of Placerville, would be the decorative lights that we have on Main Street. And so, again, that's why we'd like to get an ordinance in place that will address those issues. Another item that they addressed was non-fee requirements, and basically, what non-fee provisions in the local regulation, mainly regarding aesthetics and undergrounding, minimum spacing, and those types of requirements that could operate that would be a prohibition on the service. So, again, we want to regulate how these are located, what they're going to look like, but the regulations couldn't be so onerous that they wouldn't be able to locate within the city and provide service. Another item is what's called shot clocks. And essentially, shot clocks are just timelines. So, when a provider, be it AT&amp;T or Verizon, they submit an application to the city, we would then be under a time constraint in terms of processing that application. And then grandfathering, that was the last one that we listed, and basically, how that would affect previous agreements between a municipality and a carrier, and the city currently has none. Though the city has currently been approached by AT&amp;T to enter into an agreement, and in order to do that, staff feels it would be advantageous to actually have an ordinance in place that they would be, have to be compliant with, even before we would consider an agreement with the carrier. And essentially, that would be a way for the carrier to make an application and maybe be a more expedited process, because essentially, they could just show that they're in compliance with our code, in compliance with the agreement, and therefore, then, they would be allowed to locate within a utility pole or some other facility within the city right-of-way. And so, one thing I didn't want to forget to mention, and my apologies for this minor clerical error, throughout the staff report and the resolution that's before you, the actual file number is ROI nineteen oh two, not nineteen oh one. Nineteen oh one is the file number for the eight point five. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. We are hoping you will consider authorizing the mayor to sign that letter in support of H.R. 530, which would essentially state that the Federal Communications declaratory ruling and third report in order shall have no force or effect.
Thank you, Mr. Revoz, for the comprehensive report. Are there any questions from the council for Pierre at this point?
Pierre, what type of timeline are we looking at for this? I know you've mentioned AT&amp;T's already approached us, are we getting multiple, like Verizon's and other folks starting to knock on our doors for this?
We have actually been working with AT&amp;T now for several months, but just, I've recently been contacted by Verizon, and I hope to meet with their representative probably within the next week.
So, if I understand this correctly, any number of companies can come in, and we by, they by right have the opportunity to place their devices on our poles, and is there a limit to the number of devices on the number of poles?
That's one of the things we want to look at, and that would be the aesthetics component. And I think, in my read, the city has until April in order to address aesthetics, where the rest of the order has been in effect since January.
Okay. There, my research, I don't know how, it's fairly accurate, that there is a small town in New York that is actually in a lawsuit with one of the telephone, with one of the companies to, on the whole aesthetics, and fighting them on that. And I'm not sure what the, where that's going, or how long that'll take, but it's definitely in the works right now. Another thing, how soon do we have, I mean, do we have a shot clock on how soon this has to be done? Because there's, it seems like we should be able to limit, we should have, and they don't even have the technology specs out yet, is that correct, on 5G? They just want to put a box on our poles at this point.
That's correct. I don't, I'm not knowledgeable enough to actually speak to the technology itself, but I know that there's a race, from what I understand, out there in order to get 5G out and running. And I think that's international.
Yeah. And at some point, if we actually install fiber on our, that the city owns, we could have our own 5G network up here, which we could then lease to them. Is there, I mean, it would seem like it would be, I did talk to our guys that we're talking to about fiber earlier today, and they said that that is an actual opportunity to do that, if we get that ball rolling quick enough. And so, is there positions and spaces on there that we could reserve for ourself, as opposed to giving those up to AT&amp;T, or where they're put on the pole and such? It is all, I know it's all up in the air, but I think, you know, that we would want to be conscious of that as well.
Yes, that's something we'll probably be looking at, all those different options. At this point, we're just trying to get your authorization to begin the process to amend the code and research all the different aspects of this dilemma.
All right. Thank you.
And we'll see if another bill comes out of Sacramento as well, that, you know, failed last year, but I would assume some people will be back again.
Councilmember Borelli, did you have any questions at this time?
I know that there's quite a bit of opposition, from what I've been reading, that's coming across the internet, and then I see in the paper, to the G5. Are the public, are they going to be given any kind of opportunity to oppose this, or should that be addressed in what we're talking about?
Well, this is a discretionary process. In other words, we're looking at amending the zoning code, so we'll have public hearings before the Planning Commission and before the council, which will provide the public the opportunity to comment.
So, well, I think what I, okay, I'm not understanding that if this, if this were, if they were to get, they were to get their way and pass this, would we have an opportunity? I mean, would that be possible? If they passed it and said, this is the way we're going to do it, and you have to accept it? That's what I'm not understanding.
Let me jump in, too. So, the feds have already passed this law. It's in place now, saying that we have to allow them to place their small cells on our poles.
Okay. I thought that's what you told me.
That's correct. The bill that is proposed here would reverse that action.
Okay.
And so, that's what we're asking you to consider, authorizing the mayor to sign that letter to reverse that action. Technically, if they come to us tomorrow and say we want to, they can file application with us, I believe the date is sixty days, we're trying to find that right now. We have sixty days to apply, to reply to that. We're working with them right now. We're hoping, and I believe the Verizon representative understands that we would like to adopt this ordinance to regulate to the extent that we can. We're hoping that they will work with us on that and not file those applications until we have the opportunity to get that in place, and that's possible. So, as far as the timeline, it's urgent that we move forward as quickly as we can with this, if we want to be able to regulate it at all, because who knows whether or not what's going to happen with the bill that's in the federal, with the federal government.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, also, that the ordinance would set, we would actually set fees, and we would also be able to, at some extent, lease our property, if you will, within our right-of-way, and we don't, we just don't have the mechanisms for that in place yet, which we need.
Thank you for that, Mr. Revoz. Councilmember Taylor, did you have any questions at this point?
Well, just to make sure that I'm understanding it correctly, because there was a lot to unpack here. Whether or not H.R. 530 passes, we do want to stay, you know, with the times in terms of technology, and set ourselves up so that 5G can come here, but we want to amend the zoning so that we have control of how that's going to happen. Am I?
Yes, you're exactly right. In fact, you made a really good point. I think the city does not want to roadblock this new technology, the 5G. We just want to be able to regulate it, and our main concern was our decorative light poles and fixtures. And so, we want to be able to assess appropriate fees to process the applications, we want to be able to provide an appropriate level of lease, so that the city can get some revenues, but it's not, it can't be onerous, so that it's actually stopping that technology. Because currently, in our code, we don't regulate it. It's silent on these small cell facilities.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for those good questions. Pierre, I have one, and it's kind of the shot clock, I guess. What is your expectation from your staff to getting this to the Planning Commission for their first hearing on these new ordinance?
You mean how soon we're going to get it to the Planning Commission? Probably not until March. I would say probably the second meeting in March.
Okay. And then, how long do you anticipate before it would come to the council?
Probably then, by April.
Okay. And then, because, so the industry is actually poised to kind of do what they want right now, with the way the federal regulations are written?
That's right.
Okay. So, time is of.
Time is of the essence.
Of the essence, okay. And in the course of your work to develop this new, these new regulations, you would be addressing the impact to our historic district, our historic structures, et cetera, in protecting them?
That would be the aesthetic considerations, yes.
So, just to give a horrible example, the way the federal law is currently written, could a cell carrier come in and want to locate on top of the bell tower?
Good question. I don't know.
Okay.
Potentially.
Potentially, they could. Okay. Thank you, Mr., the city attorney was up here kind of answering that one, but thank you. I want to thank Vice Mayor Saragosa for pulling this. This actually probably should have been a discussion item, and I'll take the blame for not recognizing that when we did the draft agenda last week. This definitely needs to be heard by the public, especially the potential impacts to a historic town like ours in regards to the aesthetics issue. And the other thing, whenever we ask for the mayor or the council to send out letters of support on issues, I think it's really important that the public has an opportunity to address this council and say whether or not the, you know, what their thoughts are on that particular recommendation. This one, I think, is pretty clear-cut, but still, it doesn't matter. So, again, I, my fault, this should have been something, another one of our discussion items, but, so I appreciate having pulled. I will ask if there's any member of the public that would like to address the council on item eight point four, which is the urgent need to adopt resolution, or, excuse me, regulations on the small cell site installations. Anyone like to approach the podium? Please state your name for the record.
I support the general idea that you've had about updating the code locally. These are some of the questions I have. In this county, we have a big concern about expanding reception for wireless communication. So, the question is, what has been done to coordinate with the county's position? What are they doing? What's being done to coordinate with local communication? with local communications companies in the same business instead of the big giants like AT&amp;T and Verizon? I think CalNet, for example, I understood had a grant that they work on with the counties where they can expand using an expanded 4G technology. How does that work? You know, how would that affect it? And again, just like last year, you're in a reactive state. Last year, the League of California, League of Cities was asking you to take a position against a bill that would limit local control. Here, you're doing something along the same lines for the same purpose. But proactively, what can be done to expand local reception? For example, Mr. Thomas raised the idea of the city having its own 5G network. How does that work? Could you do that? What is CalNet's program? Like most of us, when I want to know about these things, I have to hire a technician or a 12-year-old to program my phone. And I know you, so I don't really know the difference in those systems, but I think it'd be important to know so they can expand it. Again, we desperately need to expand service in this area because of our rural geographical nature and how the population is spread out. And imagine things when it comes to forest fires up in paradise. They had a problem with reception. So it'd be good to be proactive and to involve the county, if that hasn't been done, and likewise, local communication companies, to see what other options are out there besides 5G. The last is that if I was investing in stock, up to a couple of weeks ago, I would have gone for AT&amp;T and Verizon because of 5G. But last week, in the New York Times, in the Wall Street Journal, they covered articles about why the United States has been in a cyber war of sorts, a political war with China because their big Chinese company is in competition with Samsung. And the point is whoever has the 5G technology would be able to control communications throughout the world. You can, if you have, control that system, get into any communications anywhere around. And that changes things because look what happened to the stock for Apple when they had some hacking done. First time they've had a stock decline since they've been in existence, and that was after their, their system was hacked. So I'm not sure it's going to be the big thing of the future necessarily.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And I believe staff was noting your concerns, and they are very valid points. Is there any other member of the public wishing to address us on this item? I think Councilmember Taylor said it well. We need to be prepared to have 5G. It's going to be the future. It will be an expected service here. And the thing we need to do is make sure that it doesn't clash with the community values. So I appreciate staff's recognizing that we do need to get, get back out ahead of this again. Would someone like, if there's no further discussion, would someone like to make a motion on the item that's before us?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution and to authorize our mayor to sign a letter of support of HR 530.
I'll second that.
That was seconded by Councilmember Borelli?
No.
Councilmember Taylor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, and thank you for your input from the audience. Pierre, we wish you great luck and speed to stay, try and stay equal with the 5G network community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Not an easy task. All right. Moving on to item, let's see, we have no ordinances or public hearings this evening, which will bring us to the discussion and action items. And we had earlier moved item 12.8 to be heard before the other items. And who has the staff report for item 12.8 this evening? Good evening again, Mr. Lishman.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Kuna and members of the council. And thank you, Ms. Rodman, for the gold star tonight. Appreciate it.
[laughing]
Tonight, we're asking council to adopt a resolution approving new participant fees as shown in attachment B and program schedule as shown in attachment C for the Placerville Aquatic Center effective April 1st of 2019. And approving the purchase of an inflatable obstacle course from A-Flex Technology for the aquatic center for not to exceed amount of $10,500. And approving a $10,500 budget appropriation from the general fund, unassigned fund balance for the said purchase, and authorizing the interim director of community services to negotiate a memorandum of understanding with Marshall Medical Center and the amount of $10,500 for the said purchase, and authorizing the interim director to execute the same. Staff has conducted its annual review of all programs at the Placerville Aquatic Center, including program attendance trends, participant feedback, and revenue expenditure data. We also consider the mandated increase in minimum wage that went into effect of January 1st this year. To summarize our recommendations, staff is recommending an operating season of May 25th through September 2nd, which is Memorial Day through Labor Day. We're also proposing some small schedule changes that we believe will improve attendance and streamline operations. The biggest recommended change in the schedule is a reduction in evening public swim hours. Evening public swim operates at a deficit of estimated to be $7,100 per season. Staff recommends reducing this program from five nights a week to three nights a week on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. There would be an emphasis on Friday evenings as a family fun night. It would include a rotating list of activities, including the inflatable obstacle course, which I'll get to in a minute, and movie nights. Staff recommends offering two movie nights over the course of the summer. Staff also recommends shifting afternoon public swim times 15 minutes and evening public swim times by 30 minutes. This will allow staff to adjust swim lesson times to correlate with some attendance trends we're seeing. In an effort to be a community hub, staff recommends opening time slots to the Placerville Union School District for class parties the week of May 28th through May 31st, something we haven't done in quite a long time. Many of our local schools are commuting to the Cameron Park CSD pool for their class parties. These time slots will be on a first come, first served basis with the availability to reserve starting on March 4th at 9:00 AM. This program will offer the facility to the local schools at the price of $4.16 per student, which is the same rate that the Illera County Office of Education Extended Day Program currently pays. All of the changes to the program schedules, such as rentals, lap swim, water exercise, will be to align with the new public swim and swim lesson times. In addition to the program changes, staff is recommending the purchase of an inflatable obstacle course similar to the one shown in your attachment F. Over the last several years, the number of aquatics facilities offering inflatable obstacle courses has increased. In an effort to be relevant and engage in our community's needs, staff recommends the purchase of an inflatable obstacle course for the Placerville Aquatic Center. Staff was successful in securing a local sponsorship with Marshall Medical Center to assist with the purchase of an inflatable obstacle course. Marshall Medical Center has proposed a five-year partnership. This partnership includes a $10,500 donation to the Placerville Aquatic Center to promote health and exercise through an obstacle course. The donation will be paid out over a five-year period in payments of $2,100 a year due April 1st. Staff proposes the purchase of a large inflatable obstacle course to be used during public swim on Tuesdays and Thursday afternoons, Saturdays and Sundays, as well as evening swim on Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So essentially, it will be used seven days a week. To boost participation, staff will look to implement the use of the inflatable in other areas when appropriate. Inflatables have become increasingly popular at aquatics facilities in recent years. And initial market data indicates that most facilities experience an increase in attendance and revenue. The Folsom Aquatic Center has seen an additional $27,000 to $45,000 in revenue per year from wristband sales alone for their inflatable obstacle course since they introduced it in 2009. Attached is a case study, attachment E, that was completed by the Folsom Aquatic Center from 2015, showing the increases in the revenue since the purchase of their inflatable obstacle course. The inflatable obstacle course will be used to increase revenue and attendance during public swim, evening swim, facility rentals. During these periods, there will be an additional fee for any person wishing, wishing to utilize the obstacle course. This purchase and implementation has the potential to keep the facility from having to continually raise fees to cover personnel costs. With that, I would also like to thank Aquatic Supervisor Chris Lombardi, who's here in the audience, for all her hard work on helping make this possible. And at this time, this concludes staff's oral presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions for Mr. Lishman at this point on this item?
I've got a couple of questions.
Well, certainly.
First of all, I'm so excited about movie night. I'm, I will be there, me and my daughter. I was just curious about the difference between facility and party rentals. And I actually have a couple more questions. And why you think evening swim has decreased over the last couple of years, if there's any theories kicking around, and also what the age limit for the obstacle course is going to be?
Okay, so the facility versus party rentals, I'll answer that one first. Facility rentals are when somebody comes in and rents the pool to themselves as a private facility rental. So they're the only ones potentially in that particular pool. A party rental is a, basically like a party package where they rent a table and canopy area and they're guaranteed, this is 20? 20, 20 swimmers, and it's during the rec swim hours.
Okay.
So it's not a private party, but they have their own kind of dedicated table area. And then I'd like to call, ask, invite Chris to come up to the podium, since she came all the way out here tonight, to share the thoughts behind the evening swim decreasing. So thank you, thank you, Chris.
Hi, I'm
Good evening. If you could introduce yourself for the audience.
Chris Lombardi, I am the aquatic supervisor for Parks and Recreation. And the first thing I did when looking at our budget was I tried to figure out what's broken. And the person who was in the position before me, Kim, was my supervisor for a long time. And I immediately said, what's going on with evening swim? And she said, you know, it's been a hard thing for many years, and we've tried lots of things. We've incorporated game nights, we've had spirit nights. And the honest answer is we can't tell you. It's one of the programs that we've consistently seen a decline in with our pass holders and our drop-in, and I can't figure out what it is. So this is my attempt at revamping the program to make it successful and to, you know, pull in that community hub. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the extra information. Counsel?
And then the, the age limit on the obstacle course.
What age? Do you remember the age limit? What's the age limit?
So the question is, the age limit on the
The obstacle course.
Obstacle course.
So currently, Folsom does not, there's no legal age limit that's applied. It is recommended that any kids, they have to be comfortable in the water, they have to be able to walk on their own and be able to maneuver through the obstacle courses, obstacles on their own. And so as of right now, there's technically no age limit. Anybody on it is allowed to wear a life vest, or is supposed to wear a life vest. And so Folsom doesn't require a certain age, and I wouldn't assume that we would either unless that was something that we felt like we needed to do. I would love to have it open to any kid who could do it.
Does it require any extra lifeguards with
It does not. That's one of the beautiful things about it, too. Because of the way that we set up our facility with our lifeguards, we are very careful to make sure all areas of our pool are covered with and without an inflatable in the pool. So this doesn't require any additional staff.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. I'll go ahead and open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone wishing to address the council on item 12.8, our annual aquatic center operation fees and the obstacle course?
Kirk Smith.
Good evening again.
I don't know if I can be any more successful in raising this issue now than I have been in the past. It's that we should be seeking compensation from the county because the county is a recipient of this kind of service. It's $11,000 now. A few years ago, to expand hours, it was 40,000 or 50,000. It stacks up. And when I've raised this before, like paving over at the county, in front of the county museum, or paving in front of the county fairgrounds, the answer is, well, people in the city also use county roads, but it's not proportional. I don't know the last time any of you were up in Grizzly Flats, but for me, it's been decades. Or over in Georgetown, a long time ago. But every day, those people come down, like on Pleasant Valley Road, bumper to bumper, and they come into the city. So it's not, it's not the same. Those are, a county function is to have that service. So it's called a city pool. The county museum serves people throughout the county. The county fairgrounds serves people throughout the county. This is the county seat. So if the two-by-two committee is to interface with the county, I'm just asking you be advocates for us and seek that kind of money because they should be paying for it, to appear for our roads that they benefit from, and paying for services for recreational things, great services that they benefit from. That's just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other member of the public wish to address the council on this item? Seeing no one approaching the podium, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the council for action. It is a pleasure of the council. It's not quite a Yule log, which was something Steve Yule wanted. It was a log roll. And it looked quite fun, but it just didn't happen during his era, and he's homered tired now, so we move on. And I appreciate the staff finding another attraction for the pool because it obviously, you know, we do need to be creative. We need to, need to be thinking ahead and trying to increase that folks will want to come and visit it. I would ask the city manager to address the annual contribution that we receive from El Dorado County.
Yeah, we have currently negotiated, we do, a small amount, but we do receive $20,000 a year towards our aquatic center from the county.
And maybe Mr. Warren or Mr. Morris could, on the opposite side, what is the annual operating deficit for the aquatic center?
I don't have the exact number, but it's just slightly north of $200,000.
Deficit?
That we subsidize. So the general fund subsidizes the pool operation in total. It's approximately $200,000.
Okay, that was, that's more than I hadn't realized. So I'm glad I asked that question.
I'm glad you did, too.
So any other, any other comments or questions for staff on this item?
I thought maybe, are, are we working with maybe negotiating for more money from the county? I thought that was something that we had talked about. I know this is just an ongoing thing, but
If you would like, we could bring it up again at our next two-on-two meeting. We have attempted to, we proposed higher amounts, but they have, we have not been successful at this point.
So we ask and they tell us no.
Correct.
But we'll ask again.
Okay. We will, we will bring it up. I think it's reasonable.
Yeah, we have an inflatable. That's just awesome now. Or we will.
Well, we've also just heard from Dave Warren, 200,000. That's a lot.
Has that, what is, what is the history of that? Has it been in that $200,000 range? Or is that, is that number going, or am I digging too deep here for your memory?
I don't have a real extensive analysis of that. We could look at it. I can tell you that what the fees cover is the direct cost, and that's been our past practice in recommending to the council the fees. So what we mean by direct cost is the labor, supplies, and services that directly provide for the program. It doesn't include overhead, for example, community services, administration personnel. It doesn't include propane, electricity, you know, chemicals for the, it's just the actual program of providing the program services themselves. Thank you.
Well, that's where I'm coming from, is that we have been receiving $20,000 a year for a number of years, and our costs have risen. So maybe if we, you know, get the figures and present it, you guys could, at the two-by-two, that we could at least start some conversation. Everybody's costs are going up.
All right. What's a pleasure of the council on this item? I have a motion.
I'd move that we move this resolution. I don't have a number. What is it?
12.8.
12.8.
I'll, I'll second that and just want to make a quick comment. I really want to thank staff for all the work they put into this. It's a really thorough report and all, on each item. So I thank you for that. Appreciate it. And for looking for new ways to use it in, you know, the movie nights, definitely I'll take part in that as well. So I'm looking forward to, to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Would the clerk please call a roll? There's been a motion to approve.
Mayor Kuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion's approved. Congratulations, and thank you very much for all your hard work. We will, we will be, when will the inflatable be ordered?
As soon as we can negotiate an MOU with Marshall Medical Center. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be too long.
Very good. Thank you. We're looking forward to it. And we don't want to find the police officers out there using it as an obstacle training, huh? In the pool, we get a little water training, you know, obstacles, canine maybe.
[inaudible]
Got to look for opportunities to use all of our Got to look for opportunities to use all of our resources.
Claws might, they might be a problem.
All right. Back to our regular order of the agenda. Item twelve point one. Adopt a resolu, no, I should state before we begin this, is this is a whole bunch of happy twelve points. These are some facilities that I didn't think would ever see the light of day. So the first one is twelve point one, adopt a resolution approving an agreement with Doug Beer Camp Engineering for repair work and striping at the Fox parking lot. City engineer Neves, acting public works director, of the Mountain Democrats leaving. Darn. Nick Stone. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Counsel, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thanks. Happy to be here.
We're happy to have you.
Tonight, I'm asking you to adopt a resolution approving a construction service contract with Doug Beer Camp General Engineering for patch paving, seal code and striping of the Fox parking lot, in the amount of ten thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars. The Fox parking lot's one of the first parking lots you hit if you're coming from the west side of town. It's Main Street, right next to the El Dorado Savings Building, Bank. The purpose of this proposed contract is to replace failed sections of asphalt, extend the life of remaining asphalt in the Fox parking lot by seal coating it. Sections of asphalt located in the Fox parking lot are failing, and remaining asphalt needs maintenance to prevent it from failing. Staff met with local paving contractors in November of 2018 to discuss solutions for repairing the failed asphalt and to discuss solutions for extending the life of asphalt that is still salvageable. After a meeting with multiple contractors, the list bid received was from Doug Beer Camp General Engineering for ten thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars, and that was followed by a combined bid from Wilson's Asphalt, Joe Fasini Incorporated. Their bid was ten thousand seven hundred and ninety-six. Scope of work includes saw cutting removal, replacement of thirty-five square feet of asphalt, cleaning approximately twenty thousand one hundred and sixty square feet of asphalt, and fog sealing it, re-striping it. The work's scheduled to begin once weather conditions permit, and once the start date is confirmed, public notification outreach will commence. Ten percent contingency of one thousand thirty-two dollars is recommended if additional items are needed during construction, and to further address field conditions and repairs to the existing facilities. Staff's recommendation also includes a request to grant the city manager the authority to approve any foreseen change orders during construction to address items beyond the awarded contract scope of work and prevent project delay. With council approval, the city manager will be able to negotiate any necessary contract change orders being requested for not to exceed amount of one thousand thirty-two dollars. The process for using this proposed authority will be, upon evaluation in the field during construction, myself will review force count options, make a recommendation to the city manager to address the out-of-scope work that would deliver a more complete and durable project for the Fox parking lot. And if staff, if time allows, staff will present any change orders to the city council for approval prior to execution. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Any questions for our interim public works director?
I do, I do have a couple. Is it possible, based on your description of the scope of work, the brick on the tree planters, you know, several of the bricks have been removed or knocked off or backed into, and it, it's a bit of an eyesore. Is that, is that a possibility? That's, that's one question. Another question is, on the, what would be the, the northwest corner of the parking lot closest to the creek and Jack Russell Brewery? That is a place where drainage, the leaves back up against the fence, it creates flooding that actually, during heavy rains, Jack Russell Brewery actually sandbags their doors, just to be cautious, because they've had it actually flood into their space there. It is, the fence gets all clogged up, and with the leaves and debris, and the water piles up in that corner, so it's a, it's definitely a challenge for a Jack Russell Brewery. And the third thing is, is, and this is probably a reach a little too far, but the trees seem to be, seem to be taking apart the planters in those, in those park, in those that are in there. And I, I don't know if you've evaluated that, if it's the trees or people running into it or what, but there's some, you know, if we're going to make the parking lot pretty, we're going to have some eyesores of planters in there if we don't consider replacing some of the bricks on them.
Yes, sir. So in regards to the, the other work that you're talking about, when the initial project was approved, it included, there's a part of that chain link fence that butts up to the El Dorado Savings Building, that's been cut multiple times. That was one of the items that, that our public work staff was going to take care of, because it'd probably be more cost-effective than having a contractor do it. In regards to the drainage issue, one of the items that we went over when we met out on-site with the contractor was, it would be towards the south side of that parking lot. There's a drain that's, the grade's incorrect with it, and I think that when they correct that item, it'll, it'll help with that north, northwest corner that you're talking about, and that's also an item. So both those things will be corrected. As far as the, the trees pushing out on the planters, I haven't looked at that, but that's something that we can definitely investigate, and then correct as needed.
All right. One, one more question. Where's, what is the funding source for this?
This is coming from our, our park, parking fees, so for the lease parking, general, general daily parking and citations, so...
All right. Thank you.
Parking, paying for parking lots. Any other questions from the council at this point? Thank you, Nick, doing an accurate job. Is there any comment from the members of the public on item twelve point one?
Sue Rodman, a drafted person on the public, on the parking committee, and I am really happy to see some of that money actually going to be used to fix the parking lots, which is one of the reasons that we recommended the things we did from the parking committee to raise the fees so that we could take care of our parking lots. So I think this is wonderful, and I'll give you, this would be my same comments for item twelve point two, so I'll only bother you once to say yay for the parking committee and yay for the funds that have been raised to do this work. And thank you, Nick, for pushing this on and to get it done.
All right. Thank you, Sue. And we'll note that there's a ditto in twelve point two, so you don't, we can save it. Is there any other comments from the public on this? I'll bring it back to the council for action. I would just like to comment, you know, Mr. Stone mentioned that it is one of the first lots that you see, and it is one of the lots that I go into on the weekends when we are being visited by throngs and thousands of folks, and the current condition of it is a real embarrassment. And so for the staff and Beer Camp Engineering to come up with this repair on a very heavily used and very visible to our visitors and our tourist dollars, I think this is just outstanding. And again, you, and the striping, oh goodness, it'll be so nice to know if I'm actually parked in a spot, then I'm not going to get it over the line, because right now, it's anybody's guess. So thank you very much. I told Cleve earlier today, as I mentioned earlier, I didn't think we'd ever be able to afford to get this fixed, because it, again, really, it is setting up, it is not putting us on our best foot forward when people are stumbling around in the parking lot, and they can't, and they can't figure out where to park their cars and so on and so forth. So if there's any other comments, or if there's a motion to approve this item?
I'd like to move, we adopt the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Borelli, seconded by Councilmember Thomas. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We move on to item twelve point two, another parking lot repair project, and this is the T-Trolt Lot. Mr. Stone?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this project's very similar to the one that we just went over at the Fox Lot. Tonight, we're asking for approval of a construction service contract with Doug Beer Camp General Engineering in the amount of twenty-one thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars. The scope of this project's a little bit bigger. If you notice in the back corner of the T-Trolt Lot, it would be the northeast corner, it, when it rains, it develops quite a puddle back there, and that, that's one of the major failed sections of asphalt. This project will include the removal of that, the re-grading, so that it flows properly out towards the street, but it also includes the, the removal and replacement of asphalt, seven hundred and seventy-six square feet, cleaning, seal coating, and striping of nineteen thousand ninety square feet, and a ten percent contingency, excuse me, in the amount of two thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars.
All right. Any questions? Oh, thank you. Any questions for staff? Councilmember Taylor, she probably uses this lot a lot. I, I had one, and Cleve's been seeing this one coming for a long time. We have what I consider to be the most despicable, highly-used pothole out there in the parking lot, post office, shared driveway. And you can actually see it from space, because on the, on the larger map presented here, I can see all the dark spots. And Beer Camp is going to be literally feet away from that. Every postal customer uses, goes through that hole. Most of the hotel guests go through that hole. Many of our downtown merchants go through that. The city manager goes through that hole. I think he's got a neck injury, because he's not noticing this hole. Now, yes, it's outside the parking lot, and yes, we do have to keep these projects reined in, because we have an ample opportunity to repave streets in this road, in this town. But to not fix that entrance as an addition to what has been proposed here by Mr. Beer Camp, I think would be an absolute disgrace of having a fully-capable construction company staged, materials being delivered that desperately need to go in this, this twenty-by-twenty-foot hole, or whatever it winds up being. So is there any thoughts on the possibility of to do a change order? The councils would support my concerns on this, getting this particular, it's a series of holes, really.
Which, where are you talking about?
Right here.
Oh, I see.
As you drive into...
As you go into the...
The parking lot slash post office.
But just quickly, let us take a look at that. We'll get an estimate on what it'll take to, to do that. It is a joint entrance between us and the post office. I doubt we would be successful in getting the post office to, I don't know how long it would take anyway, to agree to help us with that. So let us get an estimate on if it was within the change order amount, that may be something that we can just do. If not, we'll look at maybe, coming back to the council with a, with a cost to do that, so...
I mean, the material that we grind out of the lot would be better out in the street than what the street is right now, so... And this is not a knock on staff. This is just how bad these things are, so I appreciate the constructive thoughts on this. Is there any member of the public wishes to address the council on this? And Sue, you said you weren't going to get up for twelve point two.
But here I am, because I agree with you that I thought that those potholes, where you go into the parking lot and then swing up to the post office, were part of this project and we're going to be fixed. And if they're not, I'm really disappointed, and I hope we amend this and get those fixed, because they are terrible. I mean, both of these parking lots really need help, but this one with the entrance to it, I mean, it's the entrance to the parking lot as well as to the post office, so it's part of the parking lot, and I thought that this would include fixing that, and if it doesn't, we need to fix that, so it is fixed.
We'll go out there with a new saw and we'll start cutting the asphalt. Any other member of the public wish to address this item, twelve point two? Seeing no one approaching the podium, I'll close the public comment, bring it back to the council for our action.
May I make a comment, please? Cleve, do we have, what kind of an agreement do we have with the post office? I, I've been thinking about that a lot as I go over...
Oh, so you...
I do, and I also think that there, everything that, that represents that post office is abominable. It's, it's a mess. And I, tonight, and I'm sorry that I'm bringing this up out of, but I, I wish we could maybe approach them and do something, and maybe we've already tried, but it's, it's, the place is filthy. There's always garbage, and they don't keep it clean, and the landscaping, I think they might do every, once every two years, and it is just really, you know, it's a prominent place in town. Everybody goes to the post office, and I just really am requesting that maybe, we could put that on future agenda, but it just came to my mind when we're talking about this, so...
I, I don't know what the agreement is. I'm looking kind of at Pierre, he's my, my historian on it, but I'm guessing, and looking at that, I, I believe that possibly that area, what we're talking about, is maybe possibly in the city, partially in the city right of way, and partially on probably post office property is my guess. But I'm not positive without, without checking the parcel maps on that to determine. I don't know if we have an agreement for an easement, to, an access easement to our parking lot. I just can't tell you. I don't know, Pierre, if you have any additional information?
Just a few comments. It, it is my understanding that's, that property is owned by the U.S. Postal Service, and so it's not city property, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. But I do want to comment on the overall condition of the post office. Staff receives a lot of complaints about the post office, because we are, because it's in the city, and we do have a, we have a good rapport with, with the postmaster, so we've been working with her from time to time. There were complaints on the landscaping, and you've probably noticed, in the more recent past, he did considerable work on their landscaping. They removed dead plants, they put in bark, and they did a few things. But one thing they have been saying is, their facility has been inundated with transients, and transients do inflict a lot of damage and vandalism on the post office. In fact, the post office used to be open all night long, and they're no longer. I believe they shut their doors at six-thirty or seven o'clock, because there was a lot of damage being inflicted, not only on the exterior of the facility, but on the interior. So just for the defense of the post office, I just wanted to get that information out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me go, wanted to comment. I, I think Dave and Cleve can lament on how much the, how much heat, and Sue can, how much heat the city took for, for upping the fees for parking, and for, and for actually even bringing up the word parking at a meeting. And, and the downtown merchants were not exactly thrilled with it, and it took a lot of fortitude of the, of the council at that time, and the parking committee, and even the downtown merchants to approve and to move this issue forward, so we have the money to do this. Otherwise, this wouldn't be available here to do. And the goal was to set aside four hundred thousand dollars over ten years, and this is, hopefully, is just the beginning of it, and we're going to be doing more over the coming years to improve our parking in town, so, there you go. And Sue was a big part of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. And thank you, Mr. Yous, for that information on the post office. I, you know, I share Councilmember Borelli's concerns for the condition of the post office. Again, another high-visibility spot. You're down there watching all of our visitors come and go, and never mind the local folks that have a P.O. box that are driving in and out of there every day through that challenging series of potholes. It's, you know, to use the word disgraceful, that it's gotten that bad, but I understand that. I, I don't understand why we can't gently help the post office a little bit to be a better tenant down there. Yeah, encourage, though maybe Cleve and I can get together, and we'll meet with you, and we'll see what we can do down there, because it's, again, folks do come and visit, and that's not setting a very good example. So is there a, where were we with this? Did I get a motion on this, item twelve point two?
I'll move that.
Moved by Councilmember Borelli.
I'll second.
Taken by Councilmember Taylor. And that, would we also be asking to direct staff to seek alternate funds to address the pothole?
I'll include that in my...
So that would be included in the motion. There's no other discussion, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, and congratulations on another great project. Nick, moving on to item twelve point three. Ah, now the city engineer is going to address this. Good evening, Mrs. Neves, item twelve point three, requesting some, some additional funding for the Western Placental Interchange Project Phase Two.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas, Vice Mayor Saragosa, and council members. The proposed, the proposed item before you this evening approves accredited amendment number one to authorization nine as part of the Western Placental Interchange Project, Construction Project, under Dockin Engineering's contract. It also approves authorization ten to Dockin's contract for the Western Placental Interchange Eastbound Onramp, Phase Two Point Two project. You may recall in January of 2018, staff submitted an application for local partnership program funds for the eastbound onramp as part of the Western Placental Interchange, better known as Phase Two Point Two, and was selected to receive one million seventy[1797.12] known as Phase 2.2, and was selected to receive $1,070,000. This program is a competitive funding source of Senate Bill 1. As, on August 28, 2018, council approved a contract for design-level survey for Phase 2.2. Since that time, staff has been developing the milestone tasks to move the project forward. Amongst these tasks, tasks include the preparation of a supplement project, supplemental project report to address the revised phasing of the overall Western Placerville Interchange's project. In the interest of time and efficiency, staff felt it would be beneficial to initiate those tasks that directly support the preparation of the supplemental project report. Dawkins Engineering to date has provided environmental and design services for the project and is currently under contract to do so. Currently, construction of Phase 2 project has been underway for some months now, and due to the efficiency of the project team, it's been identified that a portion of the previously-approved budget under Dawkins Authorization Number 9 could be freed up to cover the tasks needed to support the Phase 2.2 supplemental project report. A credited deduction of $45,000 has been identified, and that is what is proposed as the amendment number one to Authorization 9 for Dawkins' contract. Authorization Number 10, in the amount of $69,887, would cover the tasks needed to support the supplemental project report, and it is, would bring the contract authorized, authorized total to $3,272,451, which is still within Dawkins' approved contract amount. Staff's recommendations are summarized in the report before you this evening. If anybody has any curious interest in what the project would be, we do have a project exhibit that's posted in Town Hall, just on this other side of the wall right here. And we do have a project exhibit, we do have, the overall interchange project exhibit is posted in several locations in Town Hall. One directly behind me and one directly behind Finance Director, Assistant City Manager, Mr. Warren. And that concludes my verbal report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Rebecca. Appreciate that. Is there any questions from the council at this point? Is hearing done? Is there any member of the public wishes to address item 12.3, the continuing engineering work on the Western Placerville Interchange Phase 2? Seeing no one approaching the podium, I'll bring it back to seat council for action. I would just like to thank staff for the, I won't even ever fold this. This is the, that is the nicest map I've seen of the ramp. I now know where it actually goes. Most excellent. And I know how far up the road the walls have to be done. I really do appreciate that. Is there, if there's no question, is there a motion?
I'd move 12.4.
I'll second. Item 12.3?
I moved 12.3 already. Yes, 12.3, sorry.
That's right. Moved by Councilmember Thomas and seconded by Vice Mayor Saragosa. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
And just for clarification, Rebecca, and then as we move forward on this, the anticipated construction on this project is...
We have a milestone schedule that shows the project will be let out to bid in January of next year. Almost two years to the date from when Phase 2 was actually let out to bid. And that would put the construction of the project right in the same kind of timeframe alignment, which would be approximately February of 2020 for initial tree clearing. We will do a little bit more PR, letting people know about the tree clearing, and lessons learned moving forward. And the construction's anticipated to last about a year or so.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
Construction season 2020. All right, thank you very much for that. All right, moving on to item, now we'll move on to item 12.4. We know Councilmember Thomas is anxious for this one. We are being asked to approve a construction contract with Joe Vassini, Inc., for, oh my goodness, this is a bad one, too, Big Cut Road Asphalt Rehabilitation Project. Mr. Stone, is that your report?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're asking to approve a construction contract with Joe Vassini, Inc., in the amount of $48,820 for the Big Cut Road Asphalt Rehabilitation Project. That's project number 41909. And also to authorize the city manager to execute the same, and authorize the city manager to negotiate any necessary contract change orders, not to exceed the amount of $4,882. Purposes, contracts to improve the PCI index of Big Cut Road, it's currently failed. I don't know if anybody's driven it lately, but it's, it's one of the worst.
It is. It doesn't even deserve to be called a road anymore.
Exactly. The scope of this project's going to go from the top at Pardee, the intersection right up there by the fire hydrant, all the way down to where Veer Camp left off with the paving on the Pardee Water Main Project, right in front of the Public Works Corp. Yard Are there any questions about the project?
All right, and any questions on the Big Cut Pavement Rehabilitation Project? As Mr. Stone indicated, this is one of the worst roads in the city. All right, no questions from the council. Any member of the public wishing to address this item, 12.4? Seeing no one approaching the podium, we'll bring it back to the council for action. Does anyone like to make a motion?
Sue, move.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Borelli and seconded by Vice Mayor Saragosa. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Excuse me. Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Don't promote him before his time. City engineer, maybe you're not the mayor. All right, well, that's, you know, the beauty of this is, as anyone would say, and I'm sure, you know, I can share this sentiment with staff, we have just issued some contracts with both Vassini Engineering and Doug Veer Camp Engineering. So we are keeping these projects local, getting some very much-needed repair work done. So that's really nice. Moving on to item 12.5, adopt a resolution regarding the potholing and crack sealing on Country Club Drive. Mr. Stone?
Thank you, Mayor. It's another paving contract. This one's going to be with Joe Vassini, Inc., in the amount of $44,480 for Country Club Drive. Initially, several, several of the cracks that go across Country Club Drive, Public Works staff went out there, attempted to saw-cut them, remove the asphalt, pave some of it. If you look at the second sheet, that's where some of the costs for Tykert and NorCal equipment were. Public Works was required to rent a mini excavator, just to make the work a little bit easier, instead of using a backhoe to try and remove some of that. We thought it'd be in our best interest to get together with another contractor to get a little bit more bang-for-a-buck with this, and Joe Vassini was the one who got the contract. It's for 60 horizontal cracks, restriping the center line, and the work is scheduled to, the work, the work is scheduled to start as soon as weather conditions permit. Once start date is confirmed, public notification outreach will commence. Are there any questions?
Councilmember questions for Nick? We really brought it this first meeting, awesome. I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned redoing the center line, striping.
Yes, sir.
Many, many years ago, the, make this long story short, would it be possible to shift the line from, on Sean Drive, between Sean Drive and Jeffrey on Country Club? There, many, many years ago, I, the neighborhood tried to get that center line shifted when they repaved Country Club. And basically, there's not enough room there for, you have houses on the south side of Country Club that back up to Lions Park, and they are allowed to park in front of their homes. The lane width is generally inadequate to allow a parked vehicle and travel and use of the travel lane. On the north side of that section of Country Club Drive, all of those homes are, that's the rear yard of all the homes that are up in Parkview Estates. They have absolutely no access, no driveways, nothing. My attempt many years ago was to have the center line shifted over, making the north side no parking, which it isn't anyway because it's not safe, and there are absolutely no accesses there to any of the homes. Are they going to have enough of that line removed that we could move it over when they're doing this? Or will we have to grind it?
I believe the amount that they're going to grind out's fairly small. I don't know if...
Okay, never mind.
The limits would include that?
I had to ask, though. Because this would have been the time. This is a headache. Councilman, or Rick, former mayor, Revo, Pierre's department received a complaint last year regarding a business operating along one of the homes on this section of Country Club, and they had four or five cars parked out there every day, and they were almost hit on wrecks on a daily occurrence. I just, I just thought I needed to ask, but you're right, you're not taking enough of the line. Thank you, Nick.
Yes, Mayor.
Any public want to comment on this particular item? This is the completion of the Country Club Drive crack seal and potholing. And some of those cracks go down to another continent.
Before you, you cut me off on the, on 2.4.
I'm sorry. Would you like to comment on 2.4?
Yeah, 2.4 is Big Cut Road. I live on Big Cut Road. I think it definitely needs to be done, and so does this one. And I'm really glad to see that we're splitting our contracts between our two great contractors in this town, so we can keep them both working for us. So those are my comments on both of them, is yes, good job. And then same thing for 2, 2.12.6 is, yes, that's another one we need to do. So yay for these contracts. We're actually getting some stuff done. I hope some of this is major L money.
We will ask that question. Thank you, Sue. Any other member of the public wish to comment on 12.5? Seeing no one else approaching the podium. Is the, is there some measure HL funding in this particular project?
I believe this one is SB 1 funding. Is that correct, Dave? The Country Club?
Yes. There was an SB 1 sign up there.
There's a sign up there that says your taxpayer, your tax dollars are worth.
And also there's a measure L sign up there, too.
Yeah, it's true. It may have, I believe it does have a little bit of measure L in also, yeah.
So SB 1 and measure L. All right, is there, if there are no other questions, is there a motion for the item?
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Saragosa, seconded by Councilmember Borelli. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. And again, Nick, thank you for your hard work on these. This is fun. 12.6, adopt a resolution approving Doug Veer Camp General Engineering for the Upper Airport Road Asphalt Rehabilitation Project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is another paving contract, asking for approval of a construction contract with Doug Veer Camp General Engineering in the amount of $77,679.23. Upper Airport Road. The limits of this project will go from the county line up towards the airport down to Goldman. It's going to consist of a three-inch grind, replace the asphalt, and restrip it. We're also, excuse me, we're also asking for a 10% contingency of $7,767. Any questions?
Any questions for staff? I think we're clear with the, again, generous maps, very helpful.
Just for clarity, these actually, these contractors are earning these bids. We're not necessarily giving them to them.
I'm glad you said that.
Yeah, because, you know, you know, there's, there's discussion about we're giving these bids to these people, and they're earning them by bidding the lowest and by, you know, being local helps reduce their cost of delivery, but at the same time, they're, they're competitive, and they're earning these bids and providing a great service to our city at the same time, so...
But it is nice that the two local contractors were the low bidders.
All right, no other, no questions. Is there any member of the public wishing to address this item? Sue, we noted that you are in, thumbs, double thumbs up for 12.6. Bring it back to the council for a motion.
I'd move 12.6.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. I'd just like to make a quick comment on this, Airport Road. And a lot of people might say, well, what are we doing that steep, narrow, et cetera? You know, it is an important access for cars and trucks to get up to the airport. And the airport serves various roles. One of the most, a couple of the most important, medical evacuations via helicopter, and also, of course, firefighting opportunities. The last few years, we've been very blessed to have very large contract firefighting helicopters stationed up there, and we need to be able to get in from both ends. And it is a city road, and it needs to be functional so that these types of emergency situations, people are able to use it just like any other street. So thank you very much for doing this. Look forward to the next part. Excuse me, I believe at this point, under item 12.7, Councilmember Thomas?
I'm going to need to recuse myself on 12.7 as I have property within the proximity of this project, so I will step aside.
All right, and we will wait for you to leave the dais and step into the secret You've got to do a lot of talking to spend all this money. And I know, you know, Sue, your comment earlier about the different contractors, I knew what you meant, but this has all gone through a, the proper bidding process. And, you know, Sue has been an advocate for years on H and L and all of the other work, and we share the sentiment, but they are the successful bidders, and the proper processes are being followed. All right, with Councilmember Thomas out of the room, I'll go ahead and introduce item 12.7, which we're being asked to adopt a resolution approving the placement of a demand upon the current owner at 1351 Broadway. This is basically for a street frontage improvement agreement. Who has this staff report? The city engineer, Neves.
Thank you, Mr. Rebecca.
Good evening again, Rebecca.
Good evening, Mayor Acuna and Vice Mayor Saragosa, and council members. This proposed item before you seeks approval for the placement of demand requiring performance pursuant to the executed street frontage improvement agreement located at Broadway Plaza. The agreement is SF-272. This demand would be placed upon the current owner of the property located at 1351 for the construction of concrete curb, gutter, and sidewalks. In 1990, city council approved the street frontage improvement agreement as required by City Code Section 8-9-3 as a condition of approval on the building and conditional use permits obtained at that time. City staff has long identified the need for construction of contiguous pedestrian facilities within the Broadway corridor in the interest of public safety. In 2015, staff submitted an application and approval of funding through the, and received an approval of funding, excuse me, through the Highway Safety Improvement Program, HCP, for the Broadway Sidewalks Project. This project will improve sidewalk connectivity within Broadway corridor by creating a continuous path of travel for pedestrians from Mosquito Road to Chanel School Road. Project exhibits have been provided within Town Hall. They're actually located just behind Chief Ortega over there. The exhibit on the left shows the overall layout of the project, and the exhibit on the right shows cross-sections of the proposed roadway. Council also has those items before you, one on each side of the page. The project, the city's project, has necessitated the immediate need to place the demand for this particular parcel at Broadway Plaza. Since the last time this item was before you, on January 22, for the Broadway Sidewalks Project, the project has received NEPA approval and is now ready to commence with final design. In review of the project's scope, there is a potential that HCP would fund the construction, not the design, of the street frontage improvement agreements as part of the Broadway Sidewalks Project due to the efficiency of delivery of the project. And due to the economies of scale, it does make more sense to include those improvements as part of the city's project. Therefore, the demand request at this time is in the amount of $31,000 is to cover engineering design costs only. Should coverage of the construction costs be needed in the future, that demand will be brought to council at a later date. The HCP funding carries an aggressive delivery timeline. The milestone schedule for this project shows design being finalized May 2019, bidding in July or August of 2019, and construction starting in September of 2019, and concluding in November of this year. As these milestones approach, staff will be commencing with public outreach to the community, especially to the impacted parcels and businesses within the project limits. That concludes staff's report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Rebecca. Do you also have questions for city engineer? Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Couple of questions. In terms of the, the cost, the 87 and then the 31,000, you mentioned, so those, the funding that we received would end, normally, we would end up asking the app, this would be paid for by the actual owner of that property, correct?
That is correct.
And in this case, we're not asking them to fund this because?
Not at this time. Having that property contain this curb, gutter, and sidewalk would actually be, it's a vital connection piece within the Broadway Sidewalks Project. The Highway Safety Improvement Program is one of the most unique federal funding sources in that they actually have money. So they, at this time, they are deeming the construction of that would be project-eligible. Some of the similar situations that can relate to that, actually, one that comes to mind is the Blair's Lane Bridge Project. You may recall, the Escaton Project actually brought forth, the original proposal of the project and the conditions of approval were that the developer was to provide a new bridge to connect to their subdivision. And at that time, we put a dollar cap amount of $1.2 million. The city moved forward in the best interest of the community, as we are in this instance as well, and applied for Highway Bridge Program project approval, and we received it. And Highway Bridge Program did, in fact, pay for 100% of the construction for the Blair's Lane Bridge. So that's an example of it, too. When it comes to the best interests of the public and how the project could actually be delivered, it's sometimes more efficient if we just pull up the reins and take care of it, delivery-wise and funding-wise.
Okay. Yeah, my only concern was creating some sort of precedent for sort of what I would say waving these fees.
Understood.
When we have it for another location, where we don't have these funds available. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any questions for staff? I guess I had one. Rebecca, is this, you're saying then that this agreement will still be in force, we're asking for the engineering dollars now, and the construction obligation for the $88,000, it would still be, we could still call that in?
Mm-hmm. We're reserving that right.
If we don't get the grant?
Go ahead.
If I might, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I think the wording of the demand has to be such that we're demanding the entire project, but at this time, because of the phase we're in, it would just be for the engineering costs. Now, if something else changes that construction cost later on, that's fine. The way the ordinance reads, the demand is supposed to be put on the owner to construct the sidewalk. In this case, due to efficiencies of scale, my understanding is they are deferring to us doing it as part of the overall project we're doing. It's going to save them some money, based on whatever they're going to have to pay. But the demand should be for the entire, with right now, only requiring the engineering costs.
All right. Very good. Any new questions with that, after that little bit of information? Thank you, Mr. Driscoll. Good evening. Is there a member of the public that wishes to address the council on item 12.7, Broadway Sidewalks?
Good evening. I'm Ann McQuillan. I'm the broker for Team Commercial. We're the property managers for Broadway Plaza. And when we had met earlier with engineering, there was some discussion of the, one of the issues we have here is some of the best landscaping, other than Hangtown Village Square, on Broadway is in front of Broadway Plaza. We really don't want to see all of our trees and shrubs and everything cut down. There is enough space behind that to have the sidewalks behind the landscaping so we can maintain the beauty of the street and still get our sidewalks. Is that still the intent?
Go ahead and ask me the questions, and then we'll get an answer.
Yeah, so the question is, is that still the intent? Are we looking at cutting down a lot of trees?
Okay.
And then I think that's essentially our major concern, is we work really hard to make that shopping center look good. We're putting a lot of money into it right now. We'd sure hate to see all that beautiful landscaping go away.
All right. Thank you, Ann. Appreciate your comments. Appreciate you sitting through, watching us spend money to fix roads. Any other member of the public wish to address the council on item 12.7?
Kirk Smith.
Good evening again, Kirk.
My memory is that this came up before you some time ago, a couple of years ago, when Councilmember Wendy Thomas owned the property. Is that the same property, Broadway Plaza, that she had?
That is the same piece of property.
Okay. And at that time, she was faced with the same issue, that there was work going to be done, and she was then going to have to pay for all of this design and implementation of curbs and sidewalks consistent with the demands that was available before. You had a choice. You either did it some years ago, or you wait until now. And you wait till now, and of course, the cost of construction went up much higher than the rate of inflation. But why wasn't that paid up? And it was, I was in the audience at the time, just amazed that the city was going to pay for that design work to help lighten the load. And I gather from this discussion that this is because it's a federal grant that allows you to do that. But how come it wasn't done at the time when the demand was, when it came before you before? And also, the way I read the agreement, is that when the demand is made on this property owner, that he or she would be, it would only happen when demands are made on the others in the same area. And I think there's about four of their properties. So why aren't they being considered at the same time? And when they are, are they going to get the same benefit of that kind of design work? That is the case for Broadway Plaza. I know I just got through paying some money to do the same design work out of pocket. I guess the misfortune, there was no federal grant money for that area. But I'd love to know how you're going to handle the other properties. Thank you.
Thank you. We will get your questions answered. Any other member of the public wishing to address the council on 12.7? Seeing no one, I'll close the public comment on this item and bring it back to the council for discussion. We had a couple of questions. Ann McQuillan wanted to know about the removal of the landscaping. I'll turn to the city engineer to get that one answered.
Yes. We will be preserving the landscaping that's there. We actually have done some preliminary layouts, and Ms. McQuillan is correct, we will be routing the sidewalk behind the trees. That was something staff felt pretty strongly about when laying out the Broadway Sidewalks Project.
Okay.
And that is still the intent. And then regarding the timing of calling in this demand, when we identified that there was a potential to utilize an SFIA for the project, and then once we actually started researching it, coincidentally, that property changed ownerships to its current owner.
Mm-hmm.
And Ms. Thomas did not own it at the time that the city began pursuing this.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
I'm going to ask either Mr. Morris or Mr. Driscoll to maybe expound on that a little bit, clarify. First of all, how many other sidewalk improvement, street frontage improvements are out there?
Well, I mean, I'm going to look back at city engineer also. You talked about the other properties. This is the only one within the scope of this project.
That is correct.
Is that correct, Rebecca?
Yes.
That we have an SFIA on? So if we don't have the SFIA, the street frontage improvement agreement on those, then the project does the work for them.
Okay. And then as far as why didn't we, why wasn't this demand made in the past?
I remember the discussion and the demand being talked about. I don't know that we actually issued the demand at that time, but we talked about doing it. I do recall that the property had changed hands at the time. It was this current owner that we were having that discussion with, not the former owners, which was, I believe, the Putoff family.
The current owners have owned it approximately, how long now?
Couple of years now, actually.
Couple of years.
Yeah, we, this was back actually when Ms. Ryerson was with the engineering division. And I believe it was early of 2016, we actually went out and met with the current property owner and their property management company and had a discussion. And at that time, we, you know, basically stated that the city is coming forth with the necessity to deliver a project in the interest of public safety, and that their component is a key piece in making that a contiguous path of travel. And they were a little frustrated. I do want to clarify that the SFIA's, the street frontage improvement agreements are recorded. They are attached to the title and the deed. And the current property owner at the time was frustrated that he had missed that in the transaction with the deed. But since then, you know, we, you know, as we try to do for all of our businesses, we do try to work with everybody, and we do try to move forward in a proactive manner in the better interest of the public for the project.
All right, very good. It just seems, it seems reasonable at the time, as this project has had a long history, as it's been designed in spurts and pieces. So it seems, it seems very reasonable that we are where we are today because of the timing of it all.
Yes, that's correct.
Councilmember Morelli?
Rebecca, I would like to ask you, you were talking about the landscaping, moving the sidewalk in the, to the back portion?
Yes, ma'am.
Instead of going down, it would be between the landscaping and Broadway.
Correct.
So this way, you're moving it on the other, but isn't, don't the, the way the cars park in that lot, don't they pull into that? So that's not going to, it's still going to, there's plenty of room for them to travel in the back?
Yes. So there's, you know, there's a few ways that you can prevent, you know, the encroachment of vehicles onto a pedestrian path of travel. One of them is to install wheel stops. You basically kind of pull the front axle of the vehicle back enough to where there is adequate clearance on the sidewalk. And as far as having sufficient room, the drive aisle width of that parking lot is, and the parking stalls for that matter, are quite a bit larger than what the city standard requires, just even for a standard parking stall and parking drive aisle. So we did a couple of preliminary layouts when we initially met with the property owner, showed them what we could do, and that looked like the direction that they were going to want to move forward. And so we, of course, thought it would be also beneficial to the community in the surrounding area to maintain the landscaping.
Absolutely. And I'm glad to hear that you're able to, because the landscaping is really nice up there.
Yes.
But I was, you know, and I guess you're talking about the, I was concerned about the cars pulling, going too far into the sidewalk.
Yes.
Yeah, so, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good question, Patty. Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
So with the SFIA's, am I understanding it correctly that when a property is sold, an agreement like this is placed on it, or when a building permit is pulled, or?
So typically, what will happen is when we have an applicant come in for either development plan review, or a building permit, or conditional use permit, staff generates a conditions of approval. And as part of the city code requirements, it includes the construction of frontage improvements. The code does allow a provision to defer those improvements and go and enter into a street frontage improvement agreement. You know, the benefit of it is if the developer doesn't have the funding at the time, it becomes less cost prohibitive to still deliver a project that they would like, and still at some point hold a placeholder for those improvements. The other consideration of doing that is oftentimes, as in it is with this project, when there is a street frontage improvement agreement, it's a placeholder for a future project that the city could come forth and deliver. The city, you know, may not have, we may have a planning document in place, which is in the case of this project as it was. We have a planning document in place, but we don't have plans, we don't have an engineer at that time hired. And so then, when we do move forward with a planned project that the community supports, then we can call in those SFIA's. We have a couple of instances throughout town where we will be doing that. One of them actually will be on your next council agenda for Upper Broadway as well.
Okay, but that's the reason that not all the other properties are also subject to the same agreement?
They would be if they went through the permitting process, that city code would kick in, and then SFIA would be required, or just outright construction of the improvements.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good question, because they can be controversial, SFIA's. I know in my old planning commissioner days, this was, they were quite the trick. But, you know, I think Rebecca did, answered that well because it does prevent an applicant from building a sidewalk to nowhere. Because, you know, you're waiting for adjoining parcels to develop, and it keeps, it's the placeholder so that when the facility is really truly needed, then the expectation has clearly been identified to the property owners that this will, at some point in the future, they are going to be responsible. So they do have their uses. If there's no other questions, I had a couple of general Broadway sidewalk project questions. We were provided another beautiful exhibit again this evening on the project. And in orange, it shows proposed sidewalk. And of course, it shows all of that along Broadway Plaza. And then across the street is my Chevron station, and then the Chucks. And then we go over to, excuse me. Is that particular, I see orange over there, Rebecca, is that part of this project? Is this?
It is.
Are we funding that?
Yes, we are.
So there's a classic example of, you know, we've done Blair's Lane and all that curb return work and everything is in. And we come down to a sidewalk to nowhere, basically, at the moment. So part of this project will bridge that gap on the south side of Broadway.
Yes, it does. There's quite a few gaps on Broadway.
I mean, that's just one example.
Yeah, yeah.
But, yeah, that's probably the biggest and most onerous, non-streetscape-like piece of Broadway. I mean, that's just kind of ugly right in there. So there's adequate funding to install that sidewalk?
Yes.
So the south side will go from, was that Blair's Lane to basically to the hotel that's down there? Or past that?
So the south side is, in this particular instance, the south side is a lot of like gap closure improvements. You know, there is a fair amount of sidewalk already in place on Broadway. One thing to consider, so, you know, in looking at the off-ramp at Broadway, it didn't make sense to put a sidewalk there. So sidewalk was added where there would be guided crossings, you know, for example, at Carson Road. I do want to point out one item, though. We have, due to the project considerations, we've actually removed the transit stop at the consent of El Dorado County Transit. There would be potentially a future stop at a different location under a different project, but we would come back for that later. But the sidewalk improvements that are located on the north side do address the gap in pedestrian facilities. And one particular location that we're all, I'm sure, fond of is the one where it has the various steps that go above street grade and come back down. It always makes us all a little nervous to see somebody pushing a baby stroller right about there. So that would be addressed. There would be a retaining wall placed, and then the sidewalk would be put at grade. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Sure.
All right, let's see. Well, if there are any other questions? You know, when I first started to review this particular proposal, it seemed to me because we are asking to do the creative design, that we would call in the design part of the street frontage improvement, because that allows us to make this extra work. It's not just straight down the curb line layout. And then go ahead and still leave the, what is it, $88,000 of the anticipated construction expenses in there, thinking that, or, excuse me, $87,000, that would free up funds to be, is making sense? If we brought, if we called the whole thing in, we would maybe call in the construction part of it, with us contributing the engineering work, was my first thought on this. But given the nature of the funding, it sounds like we are not granting any special consideration, we are going to make a motion that includes enforcement of this agreement. So that we do need that additional money that'll still be there.
As far as calling in, I'm going to try to repeat it because I want to make sure I heard you correctly, so just.
Good luck.
Thanks. The question was regarding calling in the construction now versus later.
Mm-hmm.
The reason why we haven't called in the construction now is because we, there's a decent chance that it would be paid for through HCP. As far as freeing up the additional funds for other items in the project, we actually, and this is where HCP, having the only federal funding source that actually has money, we actually have everything in here that we wanted.
Okay.
As part of the project description.
That's a little different, too.
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of nice.
Very nice, all right. Well, I'm glad that, you know, we had this discussion and brought those extra facts out. Is any other questions if we're?
No, that satisfies.
We're going to want to make sure that we make this motion with the understanding that we, as outlined by City Attorney Driscoll, that this was, Michael, were you thinking about making a motion? And then to?
As the staff recommendation ordered correctly, Mr. Driscoll, to ensure, as it's written right now, that the agreement will remain in force for the construction portion of the funds.
Let me look at it again. Oh, well, they're double checking that Rebecca, what would you anticipate our construction on this particular project?
As I mentioned earlier, we would be finalizing design in May with bidding in July, August, so June kinda gets sucked up into the federal process unfortunately.
Oh, yeah.
So we would submit our request for construction, our request for authorization for construction funds in June, and when we receive what is called our authorization, our E-76 form, we would then be able to let the project out for bidding. So this project will come before you again, requesting for permission to bid later on. And construction will be starting approximately in September, and it concludes roughly around November.
And so what happened this year?
That's, that's the game plan.
Luring federal straight out.
Yeah, H-SIP is a pretty aggressive funding source.
Thank you for that.
And in response to the mayor's question, yes, the resolution, paragraph one is worded just fine.
All right, thank you. Well, I'm glad we double checked, Mr., or excuse me, Vice Mayor Saragosa, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution of the placement of demand.
I'll second it.
All right, seconded by Councilmember Borelli. A roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Ma, Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, motion carries. Would someone please retrieve Councilmember Thomas from the chamber of silence? And thank you, Ann, for sitting through this, and we look forward to preserving the landscape, installing the sidewalk. We have high hopes for the Chucks property. Hand, hand, hand. All right, welcome back, Councilmember Thomas. I just shuffled myself right out of order here. All right, well, we've already dealt with item twelve point eight, so, gosh, we're almost done twelve point nine. Adopted a capital lease agreement to Opus Bank in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand and plus for a five-year term for some equipment purchasing. Good evening, Mr. Warren.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You may recall that your meetings held on November thirteenth and November twenty-seventh of last year, the council discussed the city's equipment replacement needs for the next five years and beyond. On November twenty-seventh, the council appropriated seventy-eight thousand ninety-eight dollars for immediate replacement of seven pieces of equipment with cash, and authorized staff to obtain financing options for thirteen additional pieces of equipment that need to be replaced this year. On December twenty-first of two thousand and eighteen, the finance department issued a request for proposal for equipment lease purchase financing in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars for a term of five years for thirteen pieces of equipment. The RFP was distributed to eleven quality lending institutions. The city did receive three proposals, and Opus Bank was determined to be the lowest responsive, responsible bidder. The RFP assumed the financing of three Dodge Chargers in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars, and a network server for police department in the amount of ten thousand eight, eight-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars, which was discussed at your previous council meeting. Due to the actual cost of the three patrol vehicles being nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars more than we originally anticipated and built into the RFP, staff is recommending that ten thousand eight-hundred-and-thirty-one dollar network server be excluded from the capital lease. Staff has identified ten thousand eight-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars in savings within the existing general fund capital outlay budget that can be used to purchase the network server, so that's taken care of. The proposed equipment lease with Opus Bank has an interest rate, an annual APR of three-point-one-six percent over a five-year period, and that was a pleasant surprise, because before we issued the RFP, we were quoted around four-point-oh-five percent, so there was preferable rates in December to our favor. The annual debt service, including principal interest, will be fifty-six thousand three-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars and ninety cents. There is a one-time thousand-dollar documentation fee that would have to be paid upon execution of the lease. This cost can be absorbed by the operating budget. The first semi-annual payment would be due in October of two thousand and nineteen. The total cost of the lease, including principal interest and documentation fees, would be two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-four cents to replace those twelve pieces of equipment. If approved tonight, staff will incorporate the fifty-six thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollar in additional debt service payments within the proposed fiscal year nineteen-twenty operating budget, as shown on page three of your staff report. If the council approves the proposed equipment lease tonight, staff will finalize the lease equipment agreement and return to the council with equipment purchase proposals for the council's consideration as necessary. The draft master agreement and property schedule forms provided by Opus Bank were included with the staff report. There are several exhibits to the property schedule that are not attached and are subject to further negotiation, including such things as insurance and prepayment penalties. With that, staff recommends that the city council award the capital lease to Opus Bank in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars for a term of five years, and an annual APR interest rate of three-point-one-six percent to finance the equipment, and also authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute the said capital lease agreement and any other documentation related to the financing. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dave. Excellent and detailed report as always, and as seen, be clear, these are three additional patrol cars.
Those are three replacement vehicles.
Three replacement, and, and they're on the property as I understand it.
Yes, they are. The chief was able to expedite those purchases very quickly because of another agency that canceled their order, and I know the chief covered that, so.
Excellent.
Yep.
All right, is there any questions for the council, from the council for Mr. Warren on this item? There's always more, but this is a good start. I'll open this up for public comment on item twelve point nine, the capital lease of some equipment. Invite any member of the public to come forward and comment on this.
Sue Rodman, resident of Plasterville. What Dave doesn't, didn't say is there's also three trucks for the Public Works Department in this, one for thirty-three thousand, one for thirty-five thousand, one for thirty-four thousand, I think. I think we've got twelve pieces of equipment here. The police department, I think, has done their homework to get an excellent deal and pay for the required safety equipment without having to finance that. So I'd say hats off to Chief Ortega and Commander Joe Wren. And the savings within the general fund outlays that can be used to purchase the network service is very good, that's great, too. I do have some questions on the other equipment proposed for the capital lease. With the savings from item eight point six of thirty-two thousand dollars, five hundred and forty-two in community services, could that savings be used to purchase one of the three public work trucks? Adding only fi, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars to the savings in item eight point six would purchase the thirty-three thousand dollar truck. Or another option would be instead of financing the four servers at thirteen thousand dollars four hundred and sixty-three, and the two meter reader handheld units at nine thousand eight oh eight, for a total of twenty-three thousand two seventy-one, could they be purchased from that thirty-two thousand dollars five hundred and forty-two savings from item eight point six? And you would still have nine thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars remaining. Financing costs at three-point-one for five years is twenty-five thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand eighty dollars and fifty-four cents. This cost is the interest paid for debt service, and while three-point-one-six is not an unreasonable interest rate, twenty-five thousand dollars is not just pocket change. Fifty-four cents is pocket change, but the twenty-five thousand is not pocket change. It's a significant share of the cost of any of the single vehicles on this list, and it's more than the total cost of the four printers and the four handheld, and the two handheld meters, meter readers. So I really urge the city to follow the fire department lead here, and to get our equipment replacement on a pay-as-you-go basis, instead of a in-debt-as-you-go basis.
Thank you, Sue. Appreciate your analyzing the purchase agreement and for your comments. Is there any other member of the public wishing to address the council on this item? Seeing no unfortunate podium, I'll close public comment on this item and bring it back to the council. Cleve, could you address Sue's comments, or you or Mr. Warren regarding the?
I'll let, I'll let Dave address those now, now, too, if need be.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, good comments, good questions. The first thing is, is that when we discussed this, and I know we have some new council members here tonight, but back in November, we actually presented the summary of a document that's thirty-nine pages of all of our equipment. We have of, and this is non-fixed-year-type equipment, three-point-seven million dollars of, of equipment that eventually depreciates and you have to replace it. So we broke that up over a six, six, well, five years and then five-plus years. And so in eighteen-nineteen fiscal year, which we're in right now, we had eight-hundred-and-twelve thousand one hundred and sixty dollars in equipment. So if we replaced everything we're supposed to right now, we would spend eight-hundred-and-sixteen thousand dollars, well beyond what this financing does. So, and this was really a follow-up discussion to our budget deliberations last spring, because we realized that on a pay-as-you-go basis, we would have to actually cut services to provide that level of funding out of your, as on a pay-as-you-go basis. So the other thing, why did we get to eight-hundred-and-twelve dollars, eight-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars in equipment replacement? We've deferred purchases, and this is a continuation. We talked about pensions, the fact that the Great Recession and the losses in interest returns, investment losses, we're still paying for that. One of the things that we did as a short stopgap measure during the Great Recession was defer purchases of equipment. During the recession, cash is king, and anything you can do to slow down the outflow of cash, you do. And we tried to be as prudent as possible, didn't mean we didn't replace equipment, but we certainly deferred several pieces of equipment being replaced, so that has built up and we're still catching up. So the savings from the one vehicle, where do you, where do you start? Certainly not with those things that are on the, in my opinion, on the capital lease list. These are high, things that need to be immediately replaced. And just to be very clear, the chief has done a great job in finding a really good deal on the three police cars, but they are being financed, they are included in the lease. So what the lease allows us to do, if it's approved tonight, is to purchase those vehicles and then get reimbursed through the lease. So the hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in total? Thirty-eight thousand dollars in costs will be reimbursed to the city and then financed through this capital lease. I think that's everything, Cleve, unless I missed something.
The other thing I wanna point out is, you need to remember that some of these are coming from different funds. So for example, the meter, handheld meter readers are from water and sewer.
That's correct.
Hundred percent right, Dave. The savings that we realized from the cash purchases we did were out of general fund. We don't want to mix those two. So in other words, we would be, if we bought those meter readers out of that savings that we had, we would be subsidizing our water and sewer funds with general fund, and I don't recommend that you do that. So there's other complications besides that that you'd need to look at, that we're not mixing those funds that you approved, that were savings because we recognized we didn't have to purchase that, purchase that other vehicle. The other thing that Dave's trying to, is saying here is that we're, we're not done. We're gonna be coming back to you as part of the budget with other items. We have, really have not truly addressed the computer needs. We've done our serious needs, but there are still a lot more that we're coming for you. You heard the eight-hundred-thousand-dollar number. We've attacked maybe close to three-hundred thousand of that through this lease and through the outright purchases that we did, the cash purchases that we did. So there's still a number of needs, we'll probably, I will tell you, we'll probably need to come back to you with another lease purchase option, in attempt to try to catch up and get back in line with all of our equipment needs, and that's one way that we can do it. If we had the cash to just purchase it and pay-as-you-go, absolutely, that would, that would be our recommendation, and Mr. Warren and I have talked about that and tried to look at ways that we can eventually get to that, where we can do that, but it's gonna, we are so far behind in those equipment purchases that it's gonna take some time to slowly move back into that, where we can, where we can do that. And as you know, we have a lot of other expenses with our retirement costs and et cetera we're gonna be looking at over the next five years that are gonna be a struggle to balance with those equipment needs. So that's why we're recommending that we not use any more of that cash. We probably will come back with your recommendation, whether it be to do outright purchases with that approximately twenty thousand dollar savings that we have, or whether it's that we just, that goes into reserves and we look at future lease purchases for the equipment is still out there as far as what we exactly recommend, but that will be coming back to you probably as part of this, this fiscal year budget that we're coming up to.
Well, thank you both for that additional information. Is there any questions from council members? Would someone like to make a motion on this item?
Well, I appreciate the shout-out on the, the fire district. However, the, the situations with the fire district were, were significantly different with not nearly as challenging of issues as we have here. But with the fire, they, they, they actually, we removed about fifty percent of our administrative staff, and, and cut healthcare, cut across the board in, in the retirement, and a lot of participation from, from the firefighters to get us to where we were. I think the city has done that quite a bit over the years to, to preserve our resources and get us where we're at. So the shout-out's great, I think that the, that the challenge is significantly different here at the city, and I just, that's mine. With that, I would, actually, I'm not gonna do anything here.
Could I make a con? I just wanna address what Cleve was saying, too. This is exactly what we asked for. We, you know, we're so far behind, and we, for, I'm gonna say the last two years, this is what we've been suggesting, and I, I really commend our staff for figuring this out, how we can do it, because we, we can't just keep kicking the can down the road. Thank you. I will make the motion if, I'll second it.
Moved by Councilmember Borelli and seconded by Councilmember Taylor. I know I, just, just in, one last question maybe to Mr. Warren or Mr. Morris, is how many employees are we down from the Great Recession?
You are currently down about eighteen percent.
Eighteen percent?
Yes.
That we have not replaced? So we're still this far behind on all of our equipment needs, and we still have an eighteen percent staffing issue. Still providing the same level of services, though, with our current staff?
Generally, yes, that's correct. It's a true statement.
So, yeah, it's, it's difficult, very difficult, so, yeah, I think.
Some people are working longer hours.
Yeah, so thank you for your hard work on this. There's been a motion, so I'll ask the city clerk to please call for the vote.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you very much. We, one of these days, the chief will actually bring one of those cars out, and we'll get to see it.
When they're done.
Okay, do I get to, do I get to drive?
Well, so I, maybe I want to get in the backseat?
Oh, no, how is the backseat with you, chief? And the lights on and up and down Main Street. All right, we've had a long, busy meeting here. Item thirteen, council reports from other agency meetings, and Eldorado Transit right up there at top. Welcome Councilmember Taylor to the Transit Board, and we found out sadly that the executive director, Mindy Jackson, is, has announced her retirement effective May of this year. Twenty-five years she has served as the executive director at Eldorado Transit, I mean, she is Eldorado Transit. And I'm hoping that through the retirement process, somebody finds some, some pictures of what the agency looked like, and the buses and the facilities that, I mean, it's world-class now, and it started out on a shoestring, so she's certainly had a stellar career. Hate to see her go, but totally understand. So that's the news from Transit, everything is good. Eldorado County Transportation Commission, I understand that Councilmember Borelli was successfully elected as the ch- Eldorado County Transportation Commission, I understand that Councilmember Borelli was successfully elected as the chair this year?
I was.
Is there, do we have a report?
I have our, the Executive Director's report in front of me. I would really like to suggest that if folks are interested, this is just such a wonderful agency that they go on their website and see all the things that they're doing.
Very good.
We talked about, you know, several, like the Broadway Sidewalk Project, and the Hot Spot. Dennis, you already gave the report on what Caltrans folks had to say about that, and we heard about some of their projects that have been finished admirably. And anyway, it's a great, I think, commission, and it is so well-run, and they just, I, they do so much in our city, in our county, and they work so well together that we've got some great projects because of it, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. And, yeah, the Executive Director's report does have tons of great information. LAFCO, we actually had a very interesting LAFCO meeting last month regarding the Fire District consolidations of various Fire Districts. The smaller ones are in financial trouble. Well-attended, there are numerous efforts that are going on right now, and of course, one of the big ones is going to take some time, and that'll depend on the county's desire to go into the fire, the fire suppression business. They currently don't do that. So that'll be an interesting topic. And in regards to LAFCO in general, one of the things that the Executive Director has been asked to do this year is actually pick a time to come to a future city council meeting and kind of explain what his agency does. So be thinking about when, I thought maybe we could do it in April, just before we get deep into budget. So maybe I'll ask the city clerk to do some polling, and we'll set, set up a presentation on what Eldorado LAFCO is doing. Sacon. Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Yes. So just the one thing that really stood out is they're gonna, we talked about the price increase for us to be participants. Well, they've now kind of come out with a Plan B that makes it a little bit softer of a cost that was going to be sort of spread out over a couple of years before it kind of fully ramps up. I thought we should have just gone ahead with, and just do it, because it just puts us further behind in terms of cost, because it was like three-thousand dollars, I think, for, for us. But it's gonna be, I think, like a two-step process before we, we get to that final cost. And then we just went over a little bit on, you know, hitting our GHG goals for the region, which, you know, Placerville, it's a de minimis amount that is really going to be the larger cities that are going to bear the brunt of that, but that's about it.
Thank you, Michael. And then, of course, we had a two-by-two meeting. I'm gonna ask Councilmember Thomas to report out on that.
We, the primary discussion point, at least as it relates to the city, initially is the discussion of the homeless. And one of the things that, let's see, Daniel Demonte, who is the, he's up there at the Health Department.
He's, I believe, a deputy or assistant director of the Health and Human Services.
Right. Thank you. And he gave us a presentation on basically what's happening with the, with the two plus or minus million dollars. And his discussion was, was enlightening, disappointing. Basically, you can't throw two million, two million dollars at a problem like this and still get the results that we want. It takes a lot more money to effectively run a program to help shelter and, and deal with homelessness in our community. And yet, we also have to maintain the programs that were, that are in place that help, help us get the money in terms of the federal grant money that we have to have in place. And I, you know what, I've heard, heard people's comments at previous meetings where they're frustrated with the lack of visibility and actual getting things done. I get it, and at the same time, I get the challenge, same challenges that the Health Department is having and the county is having in implementing this program. At the end of discussion, I think we gleaned we're trying to run a horse race with a pony and that we're really not gonna get everything we want in this. We're gonna get some movement, and hopefully this helps us move the ball down the field where more money will come in and help us do this. The, the thing that people want to happen with homelessness is not really the most effective way and ultimately help the homeless to that finish line as effectively in terms of percentages. The highest percentage rate is the rapid rehousing, where you put somebody in a home, you help them with all the facilities and the needs that they have. But the cost, and the cost goes down, but the initial cost to do a rapid rehousing is significant. And so that is, you know, that's their goal, is moving towards that, and it's not gonna happen this year, and they're really working hard, harder than I realized, to make that happen. So that's it on that.
Thank you, Dennis. Requests for future agenda items. Are there any requests for future agenda items this evening from the council?
I'll just, I know it's been a while again, but still like to have a PG&E representative come talk to us. We just saw that their latest rollout where, you know, that they may be doing more of these blackouts on a quicker trigger, if you will, going forward. And so I think it's incumbent that we really have a good conversation with them, understand what could be happening going forward, and, and then having that larger discussion as well, I think, with Caltrans and CHP.
Absolutely.
As it affects the corridor that bisects our city, so.
Excellent idea. Mr. Morris?
That is scheduled for your next meeting. They've agreed to be here.
Great. Now, ask, ask for a whole bunch of money and see if they have that. Along that same line, I think it would be appropriate, and with the stormy weather and what have you, I've gotten a little distracted and behind on some things, but the Fire Safe Council is off to a really great start. David Zelinski has really taken that out of the gate. We had a very highly well-attended little district informational workshop last month.
That was really, that was great.
This room was packed at the beginning of that. So Cleve, what it would be, or what would be the council's thoughts on asking the Fire Safe Council to come here soon while the weather is still favorable for clearing and?
You mean the, you don't mean the Placerville, the one we're just starting?
Yeah. To ask them to come to, and welcome them and, and see what they can tell us about.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. I think it may be a little bit premature, let them get their, their feet going underneath them. And I did, I am looking at setting up a meeting with them and Steve Willis, who is the county director for the Fire Safe Council, and, and perhaps the Fire District also, to talk about, you know, how do we work together? How do we coordinate all of these things together in what they're doing, what we're doing, et cetera, so that we're not duplicating efforts, that we're all working together on it? So I'm, I think maybe after we hold that meeting on that level, then perhaps invite them to come and show us what, what they plan to do and what they would like to do.
Yeah, because they really are just organizing.
Right.
Do we have a timeframe on our ordinance coming back?
We're kind of waiting on, on the county now. They took a step back and kind of changed what they were doing, but I'm hoping, I'm hoping very soon, I don't know what very soon is yet, but I'm hoping as early as in the month of March to get that back to you, so.
Okay, so maybe we could tentatively say we'll try and meet with the Fire Safe Council in April. Giving them some time to give, a couple more meetings. Again, a really nice, really nice turnout in the organization developing there. I certainly appreciate their efforts. If there are, okay, city manager and staff reports.
I wanna, I wanna follow through with my suggestion that we talk to the post office.
That's not necessarily a future agenda item, but we'll.
No, but I just wanna know that we're still, you know, we're not gonna drop it.
Sure. Under staff reports, I don't think we have anything other than I sent an email to all of you today or yesterday, today, about workshop, goal-setting workshop.
Oh, yes.
Suggesting the week of March eighteenth. We're, we're open staff-wise. Our, our preference would be kind of an afternoon meeting, but we recognize you have obligations. If that doesn't work, we'll do whatever is necessary. I heard from a couple of you, Mayor Acuna, I think, is, you're, have plans for the seventeenth through the nineteenth. Is that the dates, I recall?
Yes, sir.
I didn't get the email yet, but I have read it.
Okay. Councilmember Taylor, I know you said Monday or Friday is best for you, correct? Okay. Anyone else have any?
Have to look.
Okay, okay.
I'll get to you.
Just, just so you know, yeah, if you get back to me on that, and then I'll, I'll set the date. Need to make sure that we can use a room here for that, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
We have the department heads there, Cleve?
Yes. Just so you know, what we are, what we would like to do, I'm going to ask each of my department heads, and they're hearing that this somewhat for the first time, so I apologize, is for them to list their projects that they are working on. Some of those, you already know, I have a pretty extensive list that I want to give you, and what we're gonna ask you to do is each department will review those projects that they're working on. But then in the end, some of these major ones, I want you to help us prioritize, because I know at least from my end, and I know some of the other department heads are running into conflicts with time constraints on, on getting everything done. And so we want you to tell us what, what are your priorities and what can we recognize if we have to set something to the side that it gets delayed for a period of time. So that's kind of the format of what we'd like to do at this, at this goal-setting workshop.
Excellent. Look forward to it. Always, and it'll be timely because before budget, it'll help us have that information as we head into the budget exercise. That's always very, very useful. All right, is there any other reports, Cleve? All right, moving on to sixteen, excuse me, upcoming items, we have a number of them for our next meeting on the twenty-sixth. Civic lab presentation, looking forward to that. Regular drive paving contract award, lower airport paving contract, the Pacific Street project closeout, great success. A street furniture improvement agreement for the Upper Broadway Bike Lane project. The Upper Broadway Bike Lanes REY contract amendment, MBI contract amendment, and truck purchases and the annual crime report. We look forward to that. So with there being no other business scheduled this evening, I will go ahead and adjourn the council to our next regularly scheduled meeting on February twenty-sixth, five-thirty PM closed session, six PM regular session. Thank you and good night.